Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, San Carlos City, December 17. Thank you all for coming. We start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Roof.
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Dugan.
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman.
Present.
Chair Bradley.
Here. Thank you. Next, order of business is comments on public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Planning Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act in California. However, the Planning Commission's general policy is to refer items to the staff for their attention or have the matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Next item we have is approval of the minutes. That's for our last meeting, which was November 19.
No comments for me?
Yeah, no comments.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of November 19, 2018, Planning Commission minutes.
I second that motion.
Roll call.
Commissioner Roof.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you for that support. Next, comments on public hearings. Public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The project applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. And, excuse me. No further discussion from the floor can then be held. The Planning Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice are in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to this public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it in to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. Those are back in the corner there. If you haven't had a chance to pick one up and fill it out and hand it in. The speaker should come up to the microphone and speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in preparing the meeting minutes in the future. The order of hearings today will start with 1659 Industrial Road. Consideration of design review approval of one freeway-oriented sign, wall-mounted, internally illuminated. This item has been continued to a date uncertain, so we won't be hearing on that tonight. The three we will hear about are 1525 San Carlos Avenue, 782 Elm Street, and lastly, 52 and 560 El Camino Real. So we will start. We have a staff report, Lisa, on 1525 San Carlos Avenue. Application for a tentative map and below-market-rate housing plan for an approved 18-unit mixed-use development. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner. The application before you is a request for a tentative map and below-market-rate housing plan, and as indicated, this is for a project that has already been approved. Just to orient you and give you a little bit of background, the site is located at San Carlos Avenue between Chestnut and Cedar Streets. It currently consists of one legal lot, 13,000 square feet in area. And in 2015, the Planning Commission approved a mixed-use development. That's a four-story building with 18 residential units and one commercial space. The commercial space is at 740 square feet in area. The site is owned mixed-use, San Carlos Avenue, with a density of up to 59 units per acre. So the request now is for a tentative map and a below-market-rate housing plan. When the development was approved, it was the intention of the developer to keep it as a rental building, and then they've since decided to make it a condominium-for-sale development. So that triggers the requirement for the tentative map for the condominium units, as well as the city's code requirement to prepare a below-market-rate housing plan and provide affordable units on-site. So I'll start with the tentative map. The applicant's requesting a tentative map to subdivide the property into 18 residential units and one commercial unit. The two lots were previously merged to create one legal lot. Staff has reviewed the map and found it to be in compliance with city codes, as well as the State Subdivision Map Act. And on the below-market-rate housing plan, the city's ordinance requires 15% of ownership units in developments that contain 10 units or more to be set aside at affordable incomes, and the ratio is required at 10% moderate income and 5% at low income. The applicant's BMR housing plan provides one-bedroom unit to a low-income household, a two-bedroom unit to a moderate-income household, as well as one-three-bedroom unit to a moderate-income household. Our housing manager has reviewed that below-market-rate housing plan and finds it to be in compliance with city code and is supportive of its approval. Staff did mail the required public notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the site on December 5, as well as the notice was published in the newspaper on December 6. We have not received any comments on the project at the preparation of this report. I did speak with the adjacent property owner, and they just had clarifying questions but didn't have any concerns about making this a condominium development. And this is the motion, should you choose to make it, and I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
This says that you say it's a four-story building?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other four-story buildings around that area right now?
I need, I'm not sure about the adjacent building. Is that three stories that's currently under construction? And then two stories right next to it on the other side.
And the other thing is, is on the BMR, it says one one-bedroom low-income unit and one two-bedroom moderate-income unit?
And then a three-bedroom moderate.
Yeah. My question is, is if that is really compliant, considering, I thought that the BMR units were supposed to be the same as the regular price units, so the fact that there's one bedroom low-income unit, is that consistent with the rest of the building? In other words, I want to make sure that the low-income unit is not being treated as is less than the other regular units, you know what I'm saying?
Right. So there is a ratio of the unit mix in the building. There's six three-bedroom units, nine two-bedroom units, three one-bedroom units. And the housing manager reviewed the plan, kind of compared it to the mix of units that they have on-site, and found it to be in compliance, representative of the units, yes.
Any more questions of the staff at this time?
Is there any particular reason all three units are placed as they are on the second floor?
I'd have to ask the applicant on the selection criteria they used.
Okay. I mean, is that something that's considered? I mean, I would, you know, I think the intent of below-market housing is that it be integrated, and kind of segregating them on one floor seems contrary to that. Is that something that's considered in the review?
One of the kind of concerns that the housing manager typically looks at is, are the least desirable units the ones that are being considered? So is it the ones kind of in the dark back corner? And he found that that was not the situation here. They were pretty well representative, and he didn't express any concern with them being all on the same floor.
Okay.
Is converting from rental units to condo units, are there, is that consistent with the master plan for, is there a, this is an educational question. Is there, does the city have an intention as to having a certain amount of rental units available, or?
I don't believe our, Lisa P., correct me if I'm wrong for us, I'm not sure there's a ratio specifically on our housing element. We do like to see a range of housing stock, so we want to see, you know, that there's some rental available, as well as the range of ownership opportunities. And this is a smaller-sized condos compared to some of the others that we're seeing being built, so that does provide another ownership opportunity.
Thank you.
Maybe I should ask the applicant, but I believe the documentation indicated there were 30 trees on the site? And I visited the site, as I've visited all the sites for every meeting, and I didn't see nearly that many.
I think there's nine protected trees, and they've retained all the protected trees.
They're already taken down?
Yeah, they demoed the main residence, and then they were able to demo any non-protected trees. But we asked that they retain the protected trees until they actually start the grading and the construction work.
I noticed that. Thank you for the clarification. Anything else at this time from the commissioners to the staff? Thank you, Lisa. Next, the applicant's turn to speak. Sorry, I don't have a slip, so I don't know your name.
Actually, thank you for standing, also thank you for Lisa. And supposedly she'll be Ying Wang. Her name is on there, and she got favored today, so I presented her here. My name is Wei Nong Lai. So actually, yeah, I'm here to answer any question, and for our 18 units with one commercial mixed-use building, and if any concern, I'm glad to answer any question.
I was going to ask the same question that Commissioner Dugan asked, which was, why, can you say, are you open to having the below-market-rate units be on floors other than all on the same floor?
Actually, this plan, if we bought from someone, it's like, maybe the project, it was planned before, so like, they sold the apartment, the whole plan, it already proved by city, then we, it's not we decide, we just bought the whole project. So originally, I don't know what they concerned, why they put like, only one bedroom on the second floor. So it's not our decision, it's like, originally when the project started, and I believe the investor may talk with the architect, they started. But for us, yeah, we just continue to get the plan, is, we didn't change anything. The only thing we changed is like, we changed from apartment to condominium.
Maybe you could just clarify, on the upper floors above two, are there one-bedroom condos on those floors as well? I thought I saw.
Let me double check. That looks like, yeah, there are three, yeah, there's one, three bedrooms, one is on second floor, one is on third floor, one is on fourth floor. Yeah, for one bedroom.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the number is 204, 304, 404.
Thank you.
I guess I would just follow up then. You know, I do have a concern about those being clustered like that. It sounds like you did not invest a lot of effort in analyzing that as you took over this project. So would you object to a condition that at least one of those three units be moved to a different floor?
Actually, yeah, for me, like, I'm okay with that, but the only reason is like, right now we have plan and everything. I just worry if we change plan, we have to restart from beginning and all the step we'll go through.
No, it wouldn't work that way. You know, how it would work is a condition would be attached to our approval that one of the units would be changed from one of the three circled with red ballpoint pen to a different unit in the building.
Just like, it's not going to change plan, right? Just like, change the, but if we put like, one bedroom to somewhere else, yeah, I really worry about the, the only thing I worry is a change plan, we have to restart to apply.
Yeah, that's not a concern. It would be, it would be, it would be a condition to our approval that one of the units be changed to a different floor.
Yeah, if you change one unit to different floor, I think the whole thing will get changed.
No, that's not correct.
That's not correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it's not big deal, I think we are okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do any of the staff have any preferences or guidance on this for us?
You should just make sure in the record that you've actually identified the replacement unit from the second floor to the third floor.
Yeah. Why would that, why couldn't we just say one of the three be moved? Or no more than two be on the second floor?
You could say that, but I think what you're approving tonight is the housing plan, so if you want to delegate to staff that decision, you can do it that way, which maybe that's what you were intending to do. But if you, if you want to pick it, it's like, one that's substantially similar, maybe just above one of the other two, it's the same size unit, you could do that tonight.
Okay. I just, if the applicant, what I don't want to do is make a guess on the floor plans or if there's some other consideration. I'm not intending to be heavy-handed with this. Just, you know, is there a unit you could readily say are identical from one floor to the other that where we could say 204 is not below-market rate, but 304 is below-market rate?
I have to look plan detail.
Yeah.
I cannot give you right now, yeah, sorry.
Then I, then I would just recommend that you delegate the selection of the replacement unit to staff, and then we'll work with the applicant to select one.
Okay. Thank you.
Follow-up question then, please. If I were to go into the below-market-rate two-bedroom unit, and I were to go to another two-bedroom unit, would I notice any difference between the two units? Will the finishings be the same? Will the amenities be the same?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
If there are no more questions, is there anyone else from the applicant's side who wants to speak? We ready to close the hearing?
Through the chair, I think the, there's.
Yeah, just to open it up for, in case there's anyone from the general public who wishes to speak before you, before you move to close the public.
General public, that's what I meant to say before. Any comments in support or opposition from neighbors, residents of the city, anyone?
I'm here, so I might want to say something. I think it's great.
Could you come up here, please, and give us your name?
Hi, my name is Brenda. I actually live on Cedar Street, and I'm a tenant of a below-market-rate unit for the last five years. And I'm glad to hear that you guys, that they're still doing this for people to be able to afford condominiums in this city, you know, whether you're a single person or a family. And then your comment about, is it any, you know, different in the different floors? So that's all I wanted to say, was that this is great that you still have this. And I had heard for a while in this city that builders could pay a certain fee to get out of that, you know, so they didn't have to supply it, but I don't think that's anymore.
Would anyone like to explain that?
For the transit.
It's in our, there's still a possibility for certain types of projects to have an in lieu fee, but they have to show, there has to be a finding made to allow that, that it's not feasible to have units in the building.
And would you mind giving Lisa, this Lisa, the other Lisa, your last name, just for the record? Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Now we can close the public hearing.
I'm sure we can close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Roll.
Commissioner Roof.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Now we have discussion among the commissioners. Anything else?
I would just, as we're thinking about, I guess, delegating the authority to staff to work with the applicant on shuffling at least one of those units, the condition that occurs to me is that no two of the below-market-rate units are adjacent to each other, and that they're not all on the same floor would be the condition I think I would like to articulate. Is there a consensus on that?
I would agree with you.
It was mentioned that there were some, that they reviewed, that the units were not in less favorable locations, so I'd like to have that element be preserved. Perhaps, I don't know if the first floor is more, is less desirable or not, but anyway, I don't know. I guess, I guess the favorable location element would, that guidance would still be there, so the staff would continue to take that into account when the, sort of opening the door to reshuffling the units, but the same guidance would apply to the staff.
That's right. That's part of the general rules for these types of projects, that they not be in a disadvantaged location in the building, so we would make sure that would still apply.
I also like the idea of only two on one floor and not adjacent. Good to mix them up.
I'm really torn on this one. On one hand, I have a real problem with four-story buildings in San Carlos. I know we have a few of them, I think on Cherry, we've had, I think it's down by El Camino, close to, and I think that there's some four-story buildings there. I know there's one that I said no to, that's, they haven't started building yet, because I don't feel like it fits the form and character of our city. I think it's just a little bit too much. On the other hand, we need, especially below-market, we need housing, and so I'm trying to weigh the two, as to which one weighs on me more heavily, but those are the two things that I struggle with. But I just don't, I personally have a hard time with four-story buildings in San Carlos. I think that it's sort of, I think that three is what we've been comfortable with. We took the four-story off the Transit Village, so there's been a lot of instances where we've said no to the four stories, so that's what I'm struggling with. I just, let's just put that out there for discussion.
Through the chair, staff, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I thought you were finished. And through the chair, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, commissioners can certainly make a public comment about their feelings about the four-story, but I just didn't want anyone to be confused in thinking that this applicant, this item before us has anything to do with a four-story approval, because it was already approved. So it's really just approving the tentative map of the below-market-rate housing, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
And I think next door on the corner, that building under construction may be only three stories, but it's at least as tall as the proposed one we're considering now, I believe.
A question for staff. Is the below-market-rate provision, that's the, sort of the entry-level price, and then after that, on any sale, the price of the unit can then float with market and revert to whatever the current value is? Is that true, or is there another mechanism?
No, the below-market-rate unit will be deed restriction, and I can't recall if it's 55 years or for the life of the project, I have to, 55 years. So it's deed restriction for a period of 55 years.
And is that, is that restriction at a discount to market or at a fixed rate, plus inflection or what?
Yeah, so what we do is we look at the income categories, and so they will increase over time. So we look at the state-published income categories, and then based on the unit size, we then calculate what that sales price would be. So we start with what the income is and then go to the sales price. We also take into consideration utilities and homeowner association dues.
Okay. So in five years, if I were the owner of this and then wanted to sell it on, my sales price is effectively known by the city and by buyers in advance?
Correct. And we could calculate that at any time.
All right. And then is there, in terms of qualification for the units, is there state guidelines that direct who can actually purchase one of these?
So the city does maintain a list, and we do have policies on priorities given to people that either live or work in the community. There's an asset limitation, and then we also do income verifications.
Okay. Real helpful. Thank you for that. And then another question on just familiarity, or getting some familiarity. The 15% is a state requirement, a federal requirement?
It's a city-imposed regulation. Most communities, I believe in San Mateo County, have the, about a 15% requirement. And then this only applies on for-sale developments, so it did not apply when this was a rental product. The trigger is the for-sale. On the rental, they would pay the fee. They could provide it, it's an option.
And, you know, to Commissioner Bergman's point, has the city, has city council talked at all about changing that percentage upward to create more, you know, a differential pool of below-market housing? I know it's not relevant for this evening, but just curious about.
Yeah, I know, we're looking at the in lieu fee. It needs to kind of keep pace with the market demands and the cost to provide a unit on the less than 10-unit scenario and the rental scenario, but I haven't heard any conversation about changing the percentage that's required.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move, well, I guess we've articulated the condition. I guess I outstated. I move that the Planning Commission grant approval for tentative map and below-market-rate housing plan for the approved mixed-use development with 18 residential units and one commercial unit at 1525 San Carlos Avenue for the reasons incorporated in the staff report with the conditions in the code-compliance certificate and tentative map certificate, and subject to the condition that staff work with applicant to select the below-market unit, below-market-rate units such that they're not adjacent to each other. other and that all three are not on one floor.
I'll second the motion. Roll call.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we move ahead. The next case is 782 Elm Street. Request for approval of design review, a vesting tentative map, a conditional use permit, and protected tree removal permit for the construction of a, of four units, just four units at 782 Elm Street, right down the street here, a block. And Andrea, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Martisich, Associate Planner. The next item before you is a request for approval for a new project at 782 Elm Street. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence located on site and construct a new four-story, four-unit townhouse building with attached at-grade parking. There are four actions before the commission tonight. The first is design review for the building itself. Next, a conditional use permit is needed to allow the surface parking to be located within 40 feet of the front property line. A tentative map approval is also required to subdivide the project into the four townhouse units. And finally, a protected tree removal permit is required for the removal of two protected trees. And I'll go through each of those entitlements one at a time. The site is located on Elm Street between Olive and Cherry Streets. It's an interior lot with a width of 50 feet and a depth of 140 feet, so a total of 7,000 square feet. The site contains an existing, single-family residence to be demolished. The lot immediately to the north is a duplex, and the lot to the south is a multifamily building. The site contains a total of three trees with an additional tree located along the sidewalk. The applicant is proposing to remove all four of these trees, two of which are classified by the city as protected, and those are the two that will require the tree removal permit. The general plan designation is multifamily medium density, and the zoning is RM59. As you can see on the map, all of the surrounding parcels have the same zoning designation, RM59. There are a few single-family residences located on the block, however, most are multifamily. And then in terms of lot size, you can see there's, there is a mix. There's some of the smaller lots such as this, but there are some substantially larger lots surrounding the project site as well. So this is the site plan for the project. The applicants are proposing an entry trellis located at the northern end of the site, which leads to a shared entry path along the north side of the building, and then that would lead to individual entrances which are recessed back from the wall of the building. At grade, each unit would have two covered parking spaces, each enclosed within a garage, so we have four garages total, one for each unit, each housing two cars. Access to the garages would be from a driveway located at the southern portion of the lot. Each unit would also have a private storage area outside of the garage, and within the garage would be space for the cars, trash, and entry stairs into the unit itself. Each unit contains three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms, and has an average size of about 1,900 square feet. The majority of the common living area is on the second floor with bedrooms on the third floor and a large family room on the fourth floor. In terms of code compliance, the proposed building does comply with development standards as outlined in the code. The height is approximately 10 feet less than the maximum height allowed in the district, which is 50 feet. The proposed height is 40 feet 3 inches. The proposal meets all setback, floor area, lot coverage, parking, open space, and landscaping requirements.
If I could just ask a question there, the last project that looked like this, I thought we gave an exemption for visitor parking because it was something like slightly more than two units or two spaces per unit. Am I, did I not remember that correctly?
I believe you're thinking of maybe a project on Prospect. And I was not the planner for that, but I believe that one actually asked for a parking reduction, whereas this one has a reduction by right in the code, which I'll go over in a minute. I'm not sure if that answers what you're thinking.
Well, if, yeah, I don't understand the reduction by code, so yeah, if you could explain that when you get to it, thank you.
Great, we'll do, thanks. So the first entitlement is design review of the building. The design of the building is contemporary with simple, clean lines. I did put samples of the material up at the dais, so we do have a few for you to look at up there. These samples include the primary exterior colors, which are the cement board, both in white and charcoal finishes. The applicant is also proposing horizontal wood siding to add architectural interest, as well as Corten steel panels in a copper color, which will be utilized along the front and rear of the building, and also tie into that entry trellis at the front. The architect has utilized several wall breaks, including recesses and projections, to help break up the massing of the proposal. The windows have a two-inch recess and are done in aluminum. Some have a dark bronze finish, others are clear, so an aluminum color. And then we have frameless glass guardrails on both the second and fourth floors of the proposed building. So this is the rear elevation and, as well as the left elevation. On the left side, this is the side where the garages have their openings and are facing towards the multifamily project. As you can see on this side, the architect has also utilized recesses and projections to help break up the massing along the side. On the fourth floor of the left-side elevation, you'll see some smaller landscaping areas. These are next to the open space balconies, so each unit has their required open space on that fourth floor. And those balconies are facing towards the left, which is the multifamily project, not towards the duplex on the right. The applicant is proposing most of the landscaped areas at the front and the rear of the building, which include a mix of plants and shrubs. Several concrete pads with three-inch pebble joints are creating the walkway to the north side of the proposal. There's also a landscape strip between the project and the duplex to the right. On the left side, the applicant is proposing several cutouts in the concrete to allow some, some screening to grow in there as well, along the fence. As I mentioned before, four trees are proposed for removal, two of which are protected, and I will go over the findings for that in just a minute. A total of five new trees are proposed to be planted. Two would be street trees, 36-inch box-sized genko buloba, and three additional 24-inch box, greenleaf, Japanese maple trees are proposed on the site itself. One would be located at the front of the common open space. The second would be located in the common open space at the rear of the property. And then the final tree would be located in the private open space on the, at the rear of the property as well.
I have a question about the trees.
Sure.
Right now, there's a fairly handsome-looking one on the street. That one is one of the ones slated to be removed?
It is. That is one of them. Yeah. Okay, so in terms of proposed parking, based on the number of bedrooms per unit, the three-bedroom, the project is required to provide eight parking spaces. An additional two spaces are required for guest parking per the code. However, the code does allow the project to take an automatic 20% reduction in parking because it's within a quarter-mile of transit. Therefore, the amount of required parking is eight spaces with that deduction, which they're providing as part of the four garages. In other zoning districts, such as mixed-use districts, you're not allowed to take this 20% reduction. It's already calculated into the mixed-use parking requirements, so I'm not sure if that was the case with, with the Prospect one. But for other projects, if you can't take this reduction, you can come to the commission and ask for a use permit for a reduction and use that as some of your data to support it. However, if you can meet these findings, you know, being within a quarter-mile of certain transit stops, then you can take the automatic reduction, as long as you're not in a mixed-use district.
Got it. Yeah, I believe that last one was a mixed-use.
That may be, yeah. The applicant also conducted a parking analysis, which looked at the proposed parking on site, distance to transit, and turn movements. This is included in, as attachment five in your packets. And the analysis demonstrates that the parking can be accommodated in terms of both parking and turning movements. Because the proposed parking in the garage is located within 40 feet of the front property line, a conditional use permit is required. The area in the, on the screen outlined in yellow is the frontmost garage closest to Elm Street, and the door to this garage is 17 feet from the front property line. The code requires that in order to approve the conditional use permit, the design should incorporate habitable space built close to the public sidewalk to the maximum, maximum extent feasible, that it be screened by wall or landscaping, and that the project is constrained, so providing 40 feet from the front property line isn't feasible. Since the entire ground floor level of the structure is dedicated to parking, the design of the building places emphasis on the habitable space on the second and third floors. So I included the rendering to the right to show, you know, that projecting second floor coming forward and really, you know, not being able to see the garages themselves from the front, and also the design and the proportion of the second and third floors to really minimize the height of those garages, or that floor as viewed from the street. As I mentioned, the garages will not be visible from the public view straight on. A wood fence covered with vines will be constructed at the southern property line. And in terms of the placement of the parking, the lot is substandard in size at 7,000 square feet when 10,000 is required, and minimum lot size is also 100 feet wide when this one has 50. So having the applicant push the parking back an additional 23 feet to meet the 40-foot setback with the limitations from setbacks, landscaping, open space requirements, staff does not believe is very feasible. So we do believe that this proposal meets those required findings. The municipal code also has several general use permit findings for the project, including the proposed use being allowed, meeting the general plan zoning title and design goals and requirements, and being compatible with surrounding uses. A detailed discussion of these findings is in the staff report, and staff does believe that the proposal meets all of the required findings for the use permit for the parking The applicant is also requesting approval of a vesting tentative map. This is required to create the condominium, condominium townhomes. There's 10 required findings, all of which have been met as outlined in the staff report. The map was reviewed by the city engineer for compliance with all state and local requirements, and standard requirements and conditions have been added to the certificate, which is attachment two in your report. The last entitlement the applicant is requesting is for the protected tree removal. So there are four trees total as part of the project, three on site, one on the sidewalk. Two of the trees are protected, and both are Brazilian pepper trees. One of the trees is located on site, and the other one, as you mentioned, is located in the right-of-way. The applicant has provided an arborist report, and city staff also asked the city arborist to go out and take a look at the trees as well for, for his findings, and we are recommending removal of those two trees. Based on the arborist report and project plans, as well as the, the city arborist going out to the site, we found that the tree on the property has been poorly maintained, and topping in the past has prevented the tree from growing, or growing very well in the future and maintaining a good structure. The tree on the street has also been topped, and the arborist, city arborist, found trunk and root decay in the tree as well on his site visit. So based on those reasons, staff does believe that removal of the trees meets the findings per the municipal code. The applicant held an initial neighborhood meeting in March 2017 and created a project website. Based on initial neighbor feedback and concerns, the applicant made substantial changes to the, to the design, including reducing the number of units from six units to four. The basement level parking was removed, and the height was lowered from 50 feet to 40 feet 3 inches. In September 2018, the applicant held a subsequent meeting to show neighbors the new design. Neighbors asked clarification questions at the, at the meeting and generally expressed support for the design and the reduction in height. The applicant included a summary of comments and responses, which are included in your staff report as attachment seven. Staff also sent the required public notice for tonight's hearing to a 300-foot radius to both property owners and residents, and we did receive one email from a neighbor to the rear of the property who had clarification questions and just asked that the project remain as far away as possible from the rear property line, maintain the landscaping as shown on the plans, and be kept below the height limit. And her email is included as attachment eight in your report. This is the suggested motion, should you choose to approve the project. I'm available for questions, and the project applicant also has a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. The applicant here, ready to speak up front. Welcome.
I'm Mike Pittler, the project architect from Workshop One, and I'm here tonight with two members of Dragonfly sitting over to my right, and we're here to present to you our project at 782 Elm Street. As Andrea mentioned, our project consists of four townhomes, each with three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms with open living spaces. Since our pre-op was filed in August of 2016, we've made extensive efforts to work with planning staff and our neighbors to refine the design. In addition to two well-attended meetings, we launched an informational website to keep our neighbors informed about the project's design, evolution, and timeline, and the summaries Andrea mentioned is in your packet. In 2016, we were approached by Dragonfly to help them understand how to best approach the project site, given its unique context. It's two blocks from the San Carlos Commercial District along Laurel Street, a very short walk away, and our immediate context consists predominantly of three-story buildings, with a few exceptions here and there. Some are rental apartments and others are condominiums. And these are examples of neighboring buildings, some with below-grade parking, as you see here. The two parcels to the north, the two parcels to the north are unique for our neighborhood in that the immediately adjacent parcel is a duplex with a front unit and a rear unit, and next to that is a single-family house. The project's design was heavily informed by the duplex, and I'll get into some of those details as I talk about the design more. The project site currently consists of a single-story house, and as shown in yellow, the project's RM59 zoning allows for a 50-foot-tall building with nine residents and an above-grade building with an area that would measure approximately 14,000 square feet. A building like this could require up to 18 parking spaces, but those would have to be located into a basement level. When we started, we actually started with a 50-foot-tall building with six residences and basement-level parking with an above-grade area of 11,600 feet. So still smaller than the code allows, but, but bigger than the design that's in front of you tonight. The design was actually pretty well-received by the neighbors in our initial meeting and, and well-received from city staff in terms of the aesthetics. After some time, though, we, we looked carefully at some of the success that we've had doing some other townhouse projects, three of which have been in front of a handful of commissioners that are up, up here tonight, and we decided to redesign this project entirely into townhouses. The approach for us is it's a faster construction timeline, and you're eliminating a lot of the shared features such as underground parking, elevators, exit stairs, lobbies, mechanical rooms, those types of things that go into apartment buildings. It yields a smaller mass, a smaller building ultimately, and for our case, it's a 40-foot-tall building, so a 10-foot height reduction with four townhouses, down from a density we had at six, or down from an allowable density of nine, and an approximate above-grade area of 10,800 square feet. That includes the parking garages. This approach provides a more appropriate scale and transition between our multifamily and single-family neighbors, and like I said, is less than half of the allowable density. An aerial massing of the proposed project, the townhouse project, shows that each townhouse has an area of about 1,900 square feet of salable area, as I said, three bedroom and three and a half baths, and an exterior massing that's composed with stepbacks and a variety of materials and recesses for a refined composition. For the predominant materials, we're proposing to use natural wood and an integrated color smooth-finished cement panel, both of which I, we passed up for you to look at. And as with some of our previously, previously-approved projects, the wood sample that you have has been heat-treated, making it impervious to rot, pests, and deterioration from the sun. The cement siding is designed in both large and smaller panels that you could see on the design, with areas that are set back, again, to further articulate the facades and the massing. The project's secondary materials include some Corten steel that's used in some accent areas. areas, that plays nicely off the wood, it has a very similar color tone, and all of the materials we're using provide or have no to low maintenance. For the roof, we're proposing to use PV panels, similar to something like the Tesla system, and we've shown a graphic of what those could look like. The idea is that these will generate all of their own electricity and be zero net energy, and that's something that we're trying to do in the mechanical design. We go to the ground-level plan, and the pedestrian entrances are separated from the driveway entrance. So the pedestrian entrances are at the top of the image on the north side of the project, along a nicely landscaped pathway with plantings and a fence between us and the neighboring duplex. The private two-car garages are accessed from the shared driveway in the south, and the orientation works well with our context, given that we're placing the driveway up against the multifamily building, which has a north facade that's primarily a couple bathroom windows, a lot of foliage, and is not a main facade in any way, shape, or form. The other thing to note about this is that our garage entrances are recessed into the building and not easily visible from the street. Above this are the main living spaces. The windows have been located and designed for increased privacy between our neighbors, and the rear unit can access its private yard from a balcony. The next level up contains the bedrooms and three modest-sized bedrooms, two full bathrooms, and some closet space and laundry. Again, the windows have been designed with privacy in mind, clear story windows for bathrooms where we can, and then trying to focus where the bedroom windows are looking out toward. Above the third level is a smaller stepped-back upper level. It contains a small family room with access to a walkout deck. It's a south-facing roof deck, and as Andrea mentioned, this roof deck looks over the apartment building's roof and not into anybody's yards or into any private space. Let's go to the landscaping design. Outer space landscape architecture has provided a beautiful landscape design. It consists of a rich palette of plantings to enhance the sidewalk while creating a more inverted, soft outlook for our neighbors, with a lot of attention put into the front yard, which is a shared space, not private, there's no fencing in the front yard, and looking at a rich palette of plantings on both sides of the sidewalk. Dragonfly Group is, oh, this is another image showing some images of what the plantings and hardscape could look like, and an entry trellis is shown in the middle picture to help demarcate the pedestrian pathway. Dragonfly Group's committed to high-performance building beyond what's typically seen in today's new construction or required by code, and in particular, the project's going to utilize prefab construction by building completed wall assemblies off-site in their factory in Hayward. The framing will be light-gauge steel, and the structure will not contain wood. Site work, including foundations, will occur in parallel so that once done, the walls can be delivered to the site and assembled. The modular building process saves time, reduces waste, and minimizes neighbor disruption and construction noise, parking, and traffic. Additionally, the steel framing and the elimination of wood are ultimately more durable and resistant to fire decay and pests. Other features include electric car charging in every garage, zero net energy, as I mentioned earlier, home automation features do improve the home's efficiency and comfort, and healthy material and finishes to ensure indoor air quality and worker and occupant health. And this is an image that was not shown to you earlier, but in some of the earlier renderings, we stripped out the landscaping in the front yard so we could see the building, but this adds the landscaping back, so you could see the two street trees that we're proposing, and then the full landscaping, the trellis, and the way the project would appear with both the hard scape, soft scape, and architecture.
Question, what size are the trees when they're installed, these two front ones?
They're 36-inch. The exact height and crown, I couldn't tell you, because again, some of it comes down to what's available at that time. One of the things that we've been doing is buying trees ahead of time and letting them set up more, so keep them on-site, off to the side. But generally, the specimens, when I go out and pick them, or the landscape architect picks them, we're looking for the larger specimens within that box size. But it's hard to predict what time of year is it, what's available at that time, and a lot of other factors. And with that, we hope you agree that the proposed project helps to address the city's housing goals and climate action plan, and balances the RM 59 zoning allowances with the character of the existing neighborhood, and ultimately will contribute to both the beauty and function of the city. And we look forward to hearing from you and addressing any questions or comments that you have. Thank you.
So you've actually taken the height down almost 10 feet from the maximum, is what I'm seeing here?
That's correct.
And then you've reduced the units down to four then, instead of having the actual nine?
From six, yeah.
From six to four.
Correct. And we had a project that had already gone through a lot of its planning review, including design, aesthetics, worked a lot closely with Al, and had a design that folks were pretty happy with, and then did some thinking about what is it that we're doing here? We've had luck with the townhomes, you know, is that the better approach for this site? Because it's multifamily, but it also reads more like a single-family. You have your foundation to roof, it's your own unit, and so we went back and redesigned it, and that added about a year to the process.
And could you speak to your community outreach?
Yeah, so we did a community outreach meeting with the initial six-unit design, and it was, I would say, well-attended, given some of the other meetings we've done on other From that, we refined the design, made some changes, addressed a lot of concerns related to windows, locations of some balconies, other things like that, from main spaces like the living rooms. All that's kind of stayed put, redesigned the project, and redid the outreach. So the outreach went out to the same mailing list, and additionally, you know, we have the neighbors that had attended the first meeting or had been in touch were part of our website, other correspondence that we'd been sending out emails, things like that. So kind of maintaining the group of interested parties, and then adding to that with the second outreach meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Just, I think, probably a simple question. Common space, common space maintenance covered through a homeowners' association fee? How will all of the landscaping and exterior maintenance be managed amongst the different property owners?
That's a good question. For most HOAs, and I haven't set up this HOA, and I won't be doing that as the architect Dragonfly will be, but typically, what you see is that there would be a reserves collected every month, or an HOA due from each home, and that would be allocated to different funds. The HOA fee is something that would get established ahead of time in terms of what is a reasonable budget for the maintenance and the operations of this. Are the windows the HOA's responsibility or the unit owner's? And so you look at what's a 10-year lifecycle cost of things that are the HOA's responsibility, and down to trash service, is that shared, or is that privatized per garage? Well, in this case, it's privatized per owner, and so you start looking at what are all the budget items. Landscaping gets included in that. So based on the landscape architect's recommendation, there would be a maintenance, an interval maintenance plan. It could be weekly, or every other week would be common for a project like this, to go in and do all the yard work, trimming, cleanup work, collect leaves, raking, stuff like that. Based on that, you know, it would be a calculation of how much money per month to go, so on and so forth, but it would be the HOA's responsibility.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that you've created a handsome architectural statement in solving this site, and I'm glad that it got scaled down somewhat too, because of the size of the site. But looking around, there are many apartments on that side of the street and facing it from the other side, too. So, nice job.
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Are there any more speakers for the applicant or opposed? Support or in opposition to the project? Anyone wish to speak? No one? Okay.
Motion, we close public comment then.
Second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Acapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Well, I know I just said I don't like four-story, but they just said Carlos, and I really don't, but I really see an effort here to make this fit into the community with reduction from 50 to 40 feet. I mean, the setback on the fourth floor is 27 feet, I believe, and it's only, the minimum's only 15, so it's 27. So I really, I think it's architecturally very beautiful, and I'm very happy with the applicant's effort to make this fit, especially since it's such a thin lot.
Yeah, I concur with that. I think it's a handsome, attractive design. There's actually, that section of Elm has some of our kind of largest, most imposing apartment-type buildings, so I think this will actually be an attractive addition to that section of town. And I like townhomes. I think that is more in keeping with the character of our community and what people who move here are looking for, so I like this design.
I'll move that the Planning Commission grant approval for the design review, a conditional use permit, a vesting tentative map, and protected tree removal permit to allow the construction of one new four-story building with four townhouses at 782 Elm Street, APN 050-151-200, for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and with the conditions in the conditional use permit and code compliance certificate, as well as the tree removal permit and vesting tentative map certificate.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Acapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations on this project. Good luck.
Thank you all. Next and last tonight is 552 and 560 El Camino Real, APN 050, 074, 080, 090, and 100. Application for a new four-story building consisting of 24 residential units and two commercial units with at-grade covered parking on three different levels. Lisa is the staff planner to present again.
Thank you. I'll give you an overview of the project. So to orient you, this development site is located on El Camino, just north of San Carlos Avenue, south of Holly Street. It currently consists of two lots totaling 18,850 square feet with two commercial buildings on it. One of those buildings is a little over 1,000 square feet, was formerly utilized as a bar, and the other is about 2,700 square feet, most previously a restaurant. The property is a mixed-use downtown, which allows up to 50 units per acre, or at this site, 22 units. The request is for a design review consideration, use permit to allow unbundled parking, tentative map for the condominium units, a below-market-rate housing plan to provide three affordable units on-site, and a transportation demand management plan to reduce the project-generated trips by 21%. Starting with the design review, to give you a little overview of the site plan. The proposed development fronts El Camino and is adjacent to two public alleys, one at the south side and one at the west side. The applicant proposes landscaping along all sides of the building, including new street trees on El Camino Real, and a 10-foot-wide landscape strips along the south and west sides. The applicant also proposes a landscaped courtyard, flanking the two commercial spaces and enhancing that residential lobby area. The proposed building includes two commercial spaces, one at 1,320 square feet for retail tenant, and the other is a 1,436-square-foot restaurant space that also has covered seating and a patio space at the front of the building. The parking will be completely enclosed within the rear half of the building with 11 standard parking spaces, eight tandem spaces, 14 spaces in a parking lift system, and then two accessible parking spaces. The 24 residential units are located on the second through fourth floors with six one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit. And then to give you a bit of an overview on the design, the project architect is also here this evening and can get into more detail for you. But as you see on the ground floor, we have some nice, large storefront windows with that open patio dining for the restaurant space, the central lobby with a landscaped courtyard. The architecture is designed in a California Spanish colonial style with smooth stucco finish, stained wood elements, wrought iron railing, and a clay estile roof. And as you see, the design really wraps around and is articulated on all sides of the building. So this would be the rear, as well as that alley side that you're looking at here, so the rear elevation. And as you see on the ground floor, they have perforated metal screens at the garage level, and then you also see the landscaping wrapping around the building as well. The use permit request is to allow unbundled parking. Unbundled parking means separating the cost of parking from the purchase of a unit, and it allows residents to choose whether or not to purchase a parking space, gives them that option if they maybe don't have a car or only have one car to select these units. The applicant's TDM plan includes unbundled parking as an effective tool to reduce trips to and from the site, and used in conjunction with the project's proximity to the Cal train station, it really could encourage certain type of buyers that prefer to use transportation than have their own vehicles.
I'm sorry, what does TDM stand for in that?
Transportation Demand Management Plan?
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the tentative map is for the condominium units, so that would be to create the subdivision for the 24 residential units to commercial units. The map has been reviewed by our engineering staff and determined to be in conformance with the city code as well as the state subdivision map act. And then giving you an overview of the below-market-rate housing plan, as we discussed in the earlier project, it's required with 15% of ownership units to set aside affordable incomes, 10% at moderate, 5% at low. This development, they've proposed one one-bedroom unit affordable to low-income and two two-bedroom units to moderate-income households. Two of the units are located on the second floor, and one unit is located on the third floor. The applicant is also selected to utilize the state density bonus as well as waiver provision to allow two additional housing units and a waiver from the setback requirements. The developer is entitled to the state density bonus and waiver by right with no further review authority by the city when they're providing the affordable housing on-site. The applicant proposes the 10% in units at moderate and 5% at low-income, which qualifies the development for state density bonus of two additional dwelling units, as well as waiver, and they've decided to apply that to the side and rear setback requirements. The waivers really very minor. The required setback for a bedroom that has a window is 10 feet to the wall, and the developer has, the architects designed the development with a lot of articulations, so at the side and rear, they have some sections where the wall is actually nine feet from the property line, but the window is set in, so that's 10 feet from the property line. So that's the basis for that waiver. And as indicated, cities are required to grant density bonus and waivers to facilitate the development of affordable housing.
Are those, is that state density bonus and waiver, is that articulated in our code, or is it just a reference from the state?
The city does have its own density bonus provision in the city code, but with this scenario, the applicants decided to select the state density bonus provision, and that's articulated in the state law and not in the city code.
Okay.
Another question on that. The 15% at moderate and low-income, how do you, how's the rounding done on that? Because 24 units, 15% of 24 is 3.6.
They're, okay, so for the BMR plan, they need to provide the number of units that's required, and then the fraction can be taken care of with a payment of an in-lug fee. On the density provision, they actually have a round-up provision, even for a very small fraction, it's a round-up requirement for the density bonus.
In this case, does it start with 22?
22, correct.
In this case, does it start with 22 approved units?
Correct.
So it's 15 percent of 22?
Yes. That's correct. 15 percent of 22, and then we add the density bonus on top of that. Thank you. Okay. And then the Transportation Demand Management Plan. City code requires new developments to provide a transportation demand management plan or a TDM plan to reduce the project-generated trips by 20 percent of the standard ITE rates, the International Transportation Engineer rates. And the applicant's TDM plan prepared by Hexagon Transportation Consultants anticipates a 21 percent reduction based on its downtown proximity, proximity to rail, transportation as well as the bus line, onsite amenities, unbundled parking, and then also providing the subsidized transit passes. And staff from Hexagon is here this evening as well if you have any questions on the TDM plan or the parking.
Sorry, could I just ask on the parking, and maybe you'll just say it, wait for the applicant, but is the point that that parking is then purchasable by non-tenants?
No, it would be purchased by tenants.
Only, only by residents of the complex? Okay. But if I wanted three, I could buy three instead of?
Correct.
Okay.
Assuming there was units available, yeah, spaces. So we did conduct our required public noticing. 300 feet of the site on December 5th was mailed, and then the notice in the newspaper on December 6th. We did receive one comment, I believe, you have it in front of you, expressing concern that came in later today. Do you have that comment? Do we have extra copies?
We'll check on that.
Okay, we did receive one comment expressing concern in general with the, with the size and scale of the development, and we'll get that for you.
And that was sent to our email, I believe?
I believe it was emailed out.
Yeah, I saw it.
Correct.
I'm okay. I saw, I read it just before the meeting.
Okay. And here's the motion, should you choose to make it. And as I indicated, the applicant architect is also here, would like to give a short presentation, as well as staff from Trans, Hexagon, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, I just am going to want to understand that parking plan, not, not the conditional aspect or the ability to sell it, that's new, but just the actual layout of the parking. Is the applicant going to cover that?
With the tandems and the lifts?
Yes.
Sure. We can have, can expand on that a little bit. Thank you.
But feel free to just give your normal presentation, and then we can get to that.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kellon, project architect. Thank you to staff for the introduction and a lot of detail for this project. I mostly want to focus on, you know, kind of overview and then explain, you know, kind of our approach to the design of this project, and then obviously be available for any questions. You know, this is an exciting project because of its location on El Camino. I think, you know, proximity to, you know, the entrance there at San Carlos Avenue provided a lot of opportunities. I mean, I think our general approach, you know, to start off was to respect that location and start to think about, you know, San Carlos as a community, what kind of building, you know, is going to fit in that location, you know, where a lot of people are going to see it. I think, you know, the thing we really tried to work on that was important was to play off of some of the architectural history. So, you know, that California Spanish style, how can we create a building that, you know, is a fairly significant size with a scale that, you know, would seem appropriate, I think, you know, for that location as well as the opportunity to, you know, address the El Camino side of this project in a way that maybe some other projects haven't yet, consistent kind of with the Grand Boulevard initiative. Those were kind of the things we started with. You know, as we look at just the existing site, you know, on our survey, one of the things that staff didn't mention but was a major sort of constraint when we started this project is it's technically two lots. I don't know if this has a pointer or not, but as we've, as we took a look at the site, that's okay, that's okay. In between the two buildings, you'll notice a vertical parallel dash line, and that is an AT&amp;T easement. Behind this building, at the bottom of the page as you look at it, AT&amp;T has an infrastructure substation. So as we had discussions with them, we found out that this was a major constraint to the site because they were very concerned about how we were going to develop the site, things that we could and couldn't do. One major thing that we couldn't do was develop any kind of subgrade parking because of this, you know, easement and infrastructure trench, there was no way to work around that. Second of all, we had to work with them pretty extensively to understand what we could and couldn't do in terms of building over and around this easement because they hadn't in the past really looked at the specifics of can we have a building, you know, occupy some of the airspace over our easement. So as we started to design this, that we had to work back and forth with them, and, you know, we eventually got their approval and understanding of all the details. But that was kind of a main constraint, so when we start talking about parking, you know, we couldn't physically do any kind of underground parking to, you know, increase number of spaces, you know, reduce visibility of the garage, et cetera. So that was one thing. As we take a look at the site plan, and I think staff mentioned, you know, El Camino is at the top. We have two alleyways that exist on either side. The 20-foot, you know, at the bottom is a two-way alley, which you'll see in the site plan will be, you know, sort of the main accessway, you know, to the property for residents. And then the, the side alley is a one-way, so that's for, you know, exit only. That's current. This is the overall site plan design, so, you know, what we were looking at was addressing El Camino, you know, on the top of, you know, the page, looking at some smaller retail and restaurant uses that would be compatible, I think, with the city and also others that are along, you know, that street, not trying to bring any, anything large in. The restaurant that's being proposed kind of fits that same mold where, you know, this would be a small type restaurant that would have a small kitchen primarily focused on, you know, kind of community, kind of eating, smaller menu, smaller kitchen, you know, not a big dining experience, kind of a place you could go, hang out. It has a bar component. The indoor-outdoor seating was very important, too, to allow some flexibility for seasonal use. And also, again, like I talked about before, maybe a way to address, you know, El Camino in a way that other buildings haven't, you know, along that, you know, initiative to promote, I think, pedestrian activity, other kind of things along El Camino that, you know, you don't see, you know, too often right now, but I think the hope is that, you know, that will progress. So the retail also is smaller but could be divided into small, you know, two small tenants, which would be consistent, you know, with a lot of the other, you know, shops along there. And then the rear of the building is devoted to our parking, and like I talked about, we can't go down. So we had to look at, you know, how can we provide parking, you know, on a single level? The access will be from the rear alleyway, so we have a garage door, and you see the driveway, you know, to the rear. And then we'll talk later, I think, about the unbundled parking, but part of our solution to solving, you know, the parking was to also think out of the box in terms of what types of parking could we provide within this space. Since we're restricted, we have to put it all on one level, you know, below the building. We thought about kind of three different types here. So we have some tandem parking that, you know, can work for some of the larger units in the building. We have lift parking that can work for any type of unit, and this type of lift, lift system can go multiple levels. In this case, we're proposing three levels. But you are allowed to, or with this particular design, you can call up a single car at a time. So the car can be located anywhere within that lift structure. You punch in your code, and your car is brought to, you know, the one exit point. And the way that that works, if you were to look at the floor plan, the, the, the space to the far left would be the entrance and exit, you know, for that lift system. So you drive in, and then it takes your car. Likewise, you punch in the number, it pulls your car to that spot, and you can back out and, and drive away. And then we, you know, third to that, we tried to provide, you know, some regular parking spaces so that, you know, we had a good mix. And in our unbundled situation, I think, you know, we have a way that people can select appropriate types of parking for whatever their needs might be.
Quick question about the mechanical system. How long does it take to retrieve the car?
That's a good question. I think, I think, I think it varies depending on the size of the system, so I don't know, you know, the answer to that. I think from what they, talking to the gentleman with their normal, I think, two-level lift, I think he said it was less than a minute.
Okay.
Yep.
I was asking because I wanted to make sure that those parking spots were really going to be effectively, you know, be able to be used effectively, but...
So we searched that out, obviously, you know, wanting to find a system, you know, that was going to meet those needs and be effective. So the company that we're choosing has many successful installations, San Francisco, Oakland, where, you know, they have this problem all over the place where, you know, they just have physically constrained lots, and they need to find a way to, you know, address parking. So they have a proven model that we're following, and, you know, they've tested, and, you know, the applicant, you know, feels comfortable with.
And I'm, I'm sorry, so I'm, I'm looking at five parking spaces each with a three-stack, so that, that box is giving us 15 spaces here?
That's, no, it's 14. There's one that has to be left open. That's the one that you drive into, and it takes, there always has to be one that's open.
I see. So, so this rectangle is giving you 14 parking spaces.
Maybe a bit of a deep dive on this. A mom coming in with two kids in the backseat and groceries, and how does she actually use this thing?
That's a good question, and that's one of the reasons that we are promoting, you know, proposing the unbundled situation so that people have a choice. In this case, what they've said, yeah, I think everyone might be different, but typically, I think what you would do is you would unload things and pull the car in individually. So, you know, in thinking about that, what, the way that we've designed it is there's a sidewalk that leads immediately to, you know, the door to the lobby, you know, from the garage. So there is a safe area to, you know, unload anything from the car if you had children, you know, not very far away, to put them in a place that they're going to be safe in order to, you know, deal with the car.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a slide or something that can just show me, you know, how many units, kind of like we had on a previous project, you know, how many units are here, what's the parking requirement, how many visitor spaces are required? Because I, you know, I mean, it looks like this is, you know, packed in as tight as possible.
Sure.
So I assume we're right up against that limit, but is, can anyone explain that to me?
I'm sorry I don't have a slide that details that, but I'll, I'll list what's on our cover page, you know, to the application that talks about the required spaces and then what's being provided. So the requirement is 33 residential spaces, six, six guest spaces for a total of 39. What we're proposing are 35 spaces total. So we're, as part of our TDM plan, we are proposing that four of the, you know, required spaces be exempt.
And that's under that proximity to transportation, 20 percent exemption?
Yes, in, in this case, different from the project that you looked at before, it's, this is in the mixed-use district, so there's not a 20 percent automatic reduction, it's already built into the requirements. So in this case, what we did was we provided the TDM plan that surveyed what the anticipated usage would be for the area and for the specific project, and that helped to justify why we're requesting the four spaces be exempt.
Ken?
And excuse me, through the chair, in order to answer Commissioner Dugan's question regarding, you know, is there any detail regarding parking, and I just wanted to point the commissioners to packet page 151. On page, packet page 151, it outlines in detail that parking requirement.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful, and, and just, I would ask staff, you know, that, the slide we had on the previous project is very useful, so it would be nice to see that as part of the staff presentations. Thank you. This, this, this takes a little analysis. Okay.
Along that, along that line, the commercial, commercial units are counted in this total, so the commercial units would have some parking space, or they would have the...
The zoning code says that any commercial space that's less than 1,500 square feet does not have a parking requirement. So in this case, none of our commercial spaces require parking.
And the guest spots, are those, can those be part of the mechanical system, or are they going to be the more accessible spots?
So again, I have the traffic consultant here who could explain the unbundled situation a little more, but that's part of what is built into that plan, that there's flexibility in terms of, you know, parking spaces assigned per unit as needed, and in the case that there are extras, you know, those could be allocated any way that we want. And so that's going to be determined whether, you know, most likely, yes, they could be extra spaces that would be used for guest parking.
Oh, so now I'm confused about the, the guest spots. So if, who gets to park in those spots? I mean, anybody who's visiting, anybody in the building regardless of whether they purchased a parking spot? I mean, the guest spots, I thought, would be available for visitors.
Correct. Yeah, I think the assumption is that not all of the parking spaces, you know, would be taken because we are accounting for some guest parking in the parking that's being proposed, if you look at the numbers, because we're only four less. So in the original, for example, there are six guest spaces that would be required.
And does your plan retain six specific guest spaces, and it's the resident spaces that are part of the reduction?
So I, I, I think those specifics will come in, you know, when the spaces are sold. So it's usually a first-come, first-served basis where typically I think there's a limitation on the number of spaces that any one unit, you know, can purchase, and so...
Yeah, maybe I could ask the question differently. With the basis of six guest spaces, will the applicant agree that six will not be sold?
I don't...
And therefore leaving six guest spaces available as opposed to, since they're, yeah?
That wasn't part of our plan so far, so, you know, I guess we hadn't thought about it in that kind of detail in terms of guest parking. Like I said, typically, you know, it starts with first-come, first-served, you know, that are for sale.
I understand. I'm just thinking forward. If you sell them, then there are no guest spaces?
Conceivably, that could happen.
Right, and that number sold would presumably depend on the price, so you, you'd lower the price until all the spots are sold, I guess, if I were a capitalist. And so then you would end up, then there would be, so under this plan, there would be no guarantee of any guest spaces.
Well, again, you know, it's a bit of a progressive, you know, proposal, the unbundled parking, because...
Right.
And it doesn't work for every site. The, the main reason we proposed it for this, and we wouldn't consider it for other sites, is its proximity to transit because we, in the, I think, the mix of the units, you know, you start to see where people don't have a car, you know, that may buy a unit. You know, we do have some tandem parking that obviously would have to be for some of the larger units. But it's flexible, and it's intended to be that way because, you know, there is nothing set in stone on a, in a site like this that says, you know, we know that Unit A is going to have two cars, et cetera. So we're allowing for, you know, more flexibility.
Well, I guess we'll be debating this, but I would have some concern over a rule that potentially, maybe even likely, would end up with no guest spots. So I'm wondering, while we've got you here, whether the option of having a number of guest spots guaranteed could be part of the plan. I like the overall, the, the, for the rest of the units, the private spots, your model seems appropriate because indeed, being across from the train station, so I think, I'm not against the innovative part of it, but I'm... I'm not against the innovative part of it, but I'm a little worried about not having any guest spots potentially.
I believe we can make a condition that there be no fewer than six.
Right, I was sort of feeling around for whether that would potentially be acceptable. Otherwise, it just seems important to have some guest spots available, otherwise those cars would be using the public spots in the area.
And through the chair, one of the things that staff wanted to point it out, if you look at Page 151 of the Packet, in terms of the required number of spaces, the required number of spaces for the units would total to 33 spaces. If you can see that there's one space per one-bedroom unit, there's a requirement for six there, and then below that, it identifies 1.5 for two or more bedroom units, which is a total of 27. If you take 27 and six, you have 33. The overall project is providing 35, and assuming every single one of the tenants wanted to exercise the ability to purchase a spot, you would have at least two spaces available for guest parking. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, you could always require at least a minimum of two guest parking spaces in the project.
How does this unbundled program get administered? Will that be part of the HOA Association?
My name is Ollie Joim from Hexagon Transportation Consultants. So, the bundled parking situation, so usually, you know, when you purchase the home, if you want a parking space, you know, when you purchase it, you would say, "I want a parking space." Or later on, if there are still some available, when you want to purchase it, that's, you know, you go to the...
Sure, but there's more wrinkles to be had, like, so you're actually going to be selling spaces in the rack system individually, so if you're buying a space, you get to choose rack or no rack?
Correct, yeah.
And then, is it only people who buy rack spaces are subject to the maintenance expense of the rack, or is that just part of the general homeowner expenses?
That I cannot answer.
Okay, and then, how about the, the tandem spaces? Will those only be sold to a single person, or can someone buy the back tandem space and have an ongoing feud with the fir, person who buys the front tandem space?
So, to, to avoid the feud, yes, we are recommending that all tandem spaces be sold to single units, because otherwise, it just doesn't work.
Okay, and then when you sell your units someday, are you required to sell the spaces that, that you've also purchased separately with a different PIN number?
That would be the case, yeah.
But like, how is that required? I mean, is that required through the homeowners association? Is that a part of the parking deed? Like, what ensures that that's handled properly?
So, does, I believe, has to be answered by the project owner. I cannot answer that question.
Okay, because what I don't want to do is create a paid commercial parking lot here. I think they all have to be tied to current ownership of units with some maximum amount, and I don't really think that that program has been thought through yet, and I don't understand how that'll actually be administered.
It's definitely going to be tied to the resident, so to answer your question, yes, I believe the parking spaces would be sold with the unit. And that likely would be administered, you know, through the HOA, because in the unbundled situation, that usage request may change. So, it could be a scenario where if someone had two individual spaces that were not in tandem, for example, and they only needed one, there would be an opportunity for one space to become for sale. But it's only available to residents of the building. It's not a paid parking situation.
So, they sell it to, back to the HOA? If they didn't, they had two and they wanted one, or would they have it for, be able to sell it to the next, you know, are they, do they have it as long as they have the unit? Or, I guess all that has to be ironed out, right?
It's, it's creative, so thank you for, you know, being open about it. I think you can sense that the core of our issue is, A, will they only and always be available for residents, and B, to the extent that there are 24 units in the building, having two guest spaces is a bit of a stretch to conceive that there would only be two people looking for a guest space at any one time. So, some making sure that, that we're not inviting other people to then park on the street or other places in the area, and again, fill up surface parking is the root of what the question seems to be.
I guess my, I, I just have a growing sense of this project as one that has tried to maximize every dimension available, and maybe this is our highest-density corner, and we, there's other large projects, so maybe we're okay with that. I'm not exactly sure where I'm at on that, but do you want to just speak to that? Are there any aspects of this project that aren't built to the maximum envelope?
Well, if you take a look at, I mean, we are below the, you know, the total allowable floor area. I think that, you know, other aspects, you know, on other sites, for example, where they could build, you know, below-ground parking, you know, would push the overall effective, you know, square footage of those buildings, you know, up much higher, you know, than we would have. So, I think it's a fairly, you know, regular kind of development. Yes, we are, you know, near, you know, some of the maximums. We are applying for, you know, the state density bonus, but in this case, it's mostly because of its location and proximity that, you know, if you look at the intent of that law, and, you know, why the state proposed it, this is, you know, the kind of site that it is fit for. Lots of other sites in town, no, it wouldn't make sense and it wouldn't apply. So, I think, you know, that's part of the reason, as you look at it, obviously, you know, that pushes our unit numbers, you know, up. But as we looked at it, it, it felt like it made sense in discussion, you know, with staff and the design of the building, that it wasn't pushing it in a way that it looked, you know, out of scale or seemed disproportionate, you know, for the site. And so, you know, I'll talk about the architecture of the building, but we felt comfortable, you know, with that, that this particular location, you know, made sense, you know, for the additional units, as well as, you know, the physical design, you know, of the building. As we look at the other floors, you know, for example, you know, you can see the mix of the units on this floor. You know, we have two of the BMR units, but essentially, you know, the, the three levels of units are very similar in terms of their layout. You know, the difference being, on the fourth floor, we're trying to pull elements of that back physically with the floor plan, especially facing El Camino, especially focusing, you know, on the corner where we have El Camino and the one-way alley. Because, you know, in some respects, the alley creates kind of a corner condition, you know, for this building, where you do see part of it, you know, back, you know, into that alley. So, I think it was important to look at those aspects, as well as, you know, in some of the renderings, looking at the upper floors on the north side, you know, of El Camino. If you're heading southbound on El Camino, what does the building look like, even though it's adj, immediately adjacent to another building? Currently, I think that's only a one- or two-story, you know, structure. So, you know, there will be a difference, you know, in the short term until, if that prod, you know, that lot were ever developed. In general, you know, I think the, the unit layouts, we're trying to be consistent in terms of, you know, size and amenities for both the BMR and regular units, as well as, you know, units of similar description, if it were a two-bedroom, two-bath, trying to, you know, maintain similar sizes. The design of, you know, each of the units is also geared towards, you know, kind of that open floor plan, indoor-outdoor spaces. The decks and balconies, you know, were very important for that particular feel for the units, as well as kind of the exterior design of the building, providing opportunity to break up, you know, massing, provide, you know, push and pull of, you know, specific volumes, as you look at the building from the outside. This is just a roof plan showing, I think, some consideration to trying to create more of a residential scale, you know, to that upper floor and how we're dealing with roof forms. It is going to be a clay-tile roof. We're trying to create kind of a mansard condition where we're able to hide equipment that's going to need to go on the roof, again, as well as create some different roof shapes and forms that would be visible, you know, in the facade of the building. Like I said, the architecture, we're really trying to kind of pay homage to some of the history of San Carlos, that California Spanish style. One thing we wanted to pay attention to in particular was, you know, I think, sense of scale and how we're trying to create different roof forms and break down, you know, that upper floor. So, for example, when you look at, you know, that front elevation, for example, bringing gable forms, you know, up at that third level, providing kind of a, a lower first level, you know, where we have the commercial, so, you know, we're able to break up, you know, planes, wall planes, as well as create some, you know, horizontal lines. Those third-story roofs, you know, really help kind of break up, you know, that fourth floor, as well as, in the floor plan, we're actually stepping, you know, those elements back, so that, you know, there's some relief from the upper story. So, you know, as you take a look at, you know, the renderings, you can see where those fourth-floor elements, you know, step back, how we're creating, you know, different facade elements with those gable forms. We're creating some thickened walls. Staff had talked about, you know, the only waiver that we're asking for with the state density bonus is for, you know, some of these wall setbacks, but it, none of the windows are out of compliance with the code, you know, because the code talks about having living room windows being a certain distance back, bedroom windows being a certain setback. All of those are in compliance. The only thing we were asking for were some of these architectural elements, where you see a gable form, you know, where the wall is projecting out. So, that's helping to break up, you know, a lot of the massing, you know, with the building. It's also creating, I think, some specific architectural elements, you know, that are consistent with this style, where you get the appearance of, you know, the, a certain thickness to the wall, which creates, you know, a depth between the wall plane, you know, back to the glass, which I think, you know, adds a lot of detail. Several other elements, we have, you know, you can notice some trellises that we're trying to incorporate specifically on that fourth floor to help create, you know, a lighter feel, some texture, a different kind of architectural element. We have a lot of different kind of window types. We're linking some windows together under those gable forms, where we can create windows with a specific pattern that would be consistent with that style, and then kind of a center section with, you know, some stained paneling, so you get a lot of variation, you know, with those, with the different wall planes. We're utilizing some decorative corbeled elements under those projections. A lot of ironwork, too. There were some specific details shown here, you know, in a proposed railing concept, so we're adding some detail there, you know, with all the proposed balconies. We have some other decorative elements, you know, with wrought iron, sort of at the front of the building. If you take a look at the front elevation, kind of on the right-hand side, we're adding those elements, you know, to the window, as well as, you know, some window bars that cover, you know, some of those windows. All these little details make a big difference, you know, on a building like this, not only just stylistically, but I think, you know, that level of detail, particularly for this, you know, size project, too, makes a big difference. You know, it's, a lot of these details sometimes get bastardized and simplified in a way that I think, you know, they get lost. And I can walk you through, you know, a few of those details in what we have here. This is our color and materials board. Again, very traditional, you know, kind of warm colors that are going to be consistent, you know, with that style. Talked about the, the iron railing. We have some awnings that are being proposed that would be consistent with the style, where we can have some wrought iron support. Again, another opportunity for some detail. We have, you know, several elements of stained wood around the balconies and decks that will add a different, you know, sort of detail and texture. We're showing a proposed decorative screen here on Number 7, and this area is at the parking garage level. So, we've created kind of a different arch to help break up, you know, those long walls, where, you know, we have the parking garage at the back. You know, doing a decorative screen, the landscape plan, you know, has incorporated some vines that can grow into that, so that will really help, along with the landscaping that are, you know, in those yards, that'll really help in, help to soften, you know, the building and create, you know, another detailed element. These sections just kind of give you an idea that, when I talked about the upper roof, you know, creating a place that we can, you know, hide equipment and break down, you know, the scale of that. We included a lot of these details to show specifically how we were going to address, you know, certain detail elements, which again, is important, you know, on a building like this, you know, what are, what do those roof overhangs look like? You know, is it, it's not just a box. What we're showing in the upper right-hand corner is, you know, some exposed decorative, what are called rafter tails, that have a certain shape to them, that would be consistent with the style of building. On the left-hand side is our kind of typical window detail, so where we don't have thickened walls, we are setting windows back within the wall frame. So, you will have stucco that recesses into each of those openings. So, a regular window opening is going to have an additional kind of two-inch depth to it. Again, those details are important, you know, on a building like this, where you have, you know, a larger kind of facade that you're creating shadows and a little, level of detail, you know, it's going to be important to really strengthen the architecture of the building. These just show a couple details on these thickened walls, where we're doing some, what's going to look like kind of a cast-stone trim that is around that recess and then recesses into the window. Again, another kind of detail that would be consistent with the style, and it's going to help those elements stand out and create, you know, that level of detail. And then some trellis that we're proposing on the front side for the outdoor seating And then lastly, the landscape plan, I think, is consistent with the architecture. There is a lot of, you know, color that's going to be complementary, you know, to the building. Staff had mentioned some street trees that we're proposing, you know, along El Camino. The landscape plan also is calling, you can see, several trees that wrap around the building. So, those are a combination of Saratoga Laurel and, what was the other one? Crete Myrtle. So, we're getting a lot of color, along with, you know, some native kind of landscape to create that 10-foot buffer on the right-hand side, rear side, and then the entry courtyard, which is surrounded by a low landscape wall. So, we're creating kind of a buffer and a little sense of separation, you know, from El Camino for the residential entry. So...
Have you given any thought to the, the other commercial unit? What would go in there? Office or sales or...
I think primarily, it would be planned for small retail, so similar to other kinds of spaces, you know, that you would see along there, whether it be a small, you know, clothing shop, something like that.
And say, this guy to prove tonight, when would you envision construction starting and finishing?
That's a good question.
Because we've, we've had a lot of traffic congestion right across the street with the Transit Village for a couple of years, and if this would be in conflict with, with that, although that's getting finished up along there now.
Sure. I, I know that the, you know, owner's desire is to get a building permit, you know, as quickly as we can, so I think, you know, in terms of being able to start, that would be something they'd want to do as quickly as they can. You know, and I think we've been talking about somewhere around a year and a half duration for construction.
Thank you.
In terms of energy efficiency, or really being progressive on energy usage, I, I didn't see any mention of PV panels up on what is a lot of roof space. Did I miss that, or are they planned?
Specifically, we're not proposing them, but we are in... Specifically, we're not proposing them, but we are in, you know, compliance with the Green Building Code that talks about, you know, solar roof area that is ready for that. So a lot of times in these kind of buildings, you know, that can be something that, you know, the HOA takes a look at, too. So we have those areas on the roof reserved, you know, for solar panels.
And as a, I don't know if we can do this, but as a condition of approval, would, would the applicant be open to actually proposing a substantial solar array on the roof?
Yes.
Okay. And I suppose the linkages then are the vehicle stations. I mean, more and more of those parking lots are going to be serving electric vehicles. Are they going to be built with electrical vehicle power points at them already or some number going to be?
Yes, there will be. I don't know the number offhand. There are some that will be built and then the code also requires that some be available, meaning they could be converted in the future.
Have you considered making this a three-story building? Because, right, we have the AT&amp;T building, which is basically two stories or one and a half, two stories, and you cross the street, we have a single-story building. And then I think you're right next to it, right? Or close to it.
Next to which one?
The single-story little building, I forget what it is. Right, okay.
That's the property next door, but, yeah.
Right, south, south of you, right? Okay, so then you're a four-story building and if you walk across the street, there's a transit village, which are all three stories. And not only is it three stories, at the point where your building is, is where we actually require that there be steps up from the single-story Depot Cafe, which is a historical point, right? So that's a single-story cafe. Then we have a step up because we didn't want there to be a big gap. And then we go to the three stories. So now you're proposing four stories across the street from that. I have a real problem with that. And I don't know what the other commissioners say, but I mean, that is like our showcase of a city. I mean, it's exactly where we want to have everything aligned and I have a hard, I have a hard time with this as it is with four stories. And I love, just by the way, I'd love the style. I think Spanish architecture is great and I'm glad you're trying to do unbundled as long as we reserve guest spaces, right? Because I think that's the way of the future is unbundled. But I just, I just, you know, this is our, this is our, our showcase and I don't want any, frankly, the, the transit village is supposed to be where the attention's drawn, right? Because that's where our community center is with the depot and then it's going to be sort of pulling away from the attention that we have there. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents. So would you consider that?
We, we did not consider three stories. Again, like I talked about in the beginning, I mean, we were, we were pretty constrained with the site in dealing with AT&amp;T to begin with, so it didn't give us a whole lot of flexibility. You know, we had worked pretty early with staff to talk about, you know, what we think, you know, felt appropriate, you know, for the site. And then I, you know, as I talked about with the design, I think the fourth floor is always a challenge. You know, how do you design it in a way that, you know, is sensitive and, and makes sense, you know, with the property? I think despite the number of units, like I said, we, we did have an opportunity to, you know, step that in. So I think, hopefully the renderings will show you, even if you're opposed to the fourth floor. I mean, we really took a lot of effort to try to, you know, create that difference and make more of the focus of the building, you know, on that third-story level. So I think, you know, from a street-level perspective, you know, that's generally how the building is going to read.
No, I like your architecture and I know, and I can see that there's been effort to, to pull back the four-story. I just, I'm just thinking of how that downtown area looks and what we want it to be as far as a showcase of the city and it's.
Yeah, I understand, but your zoning code does allow for, you know, the.
That's why we have a commission, too, right? Because we're supposed to see what, what fits the community. So anyway, okay. I mean, that's just, just mine and.
I would, I'm also curious about this and sort of like to understand how the height of this compares to the ones across the street. I mean, is it going to be noticeably, because one of the guidances is whether it's compatible with the, with the neighborhood and, and whether this one is, is noticeably more massive than that become, started to become a problem, but.
Does the staff know?
Four stories is, what?
Does the staff know the height of the transit village versus the height?
For instance, that is sort of either being told numerically or seeing a representation of how this one would compare to the, to the other.
The transit village is about 46 to 48 feet in height.
Remind me, this one?
So we, I believe the top of our roof is 48 and then we, you're allowed to go up to four feet above the 50-foot limit, I think, with your mansard. So I think, I think the very top of the tile roof, wherever that hits, was 52 feet. Yep.
A related question to the fourth story, if it's really important, it can also be potentially set back a little to kind of soften the, instead of having more fair, I mean, I see you've broken up the, the front quite nicely, but still there's elements that go all the way up the four, four stories. Setting the fourth story back a little might be a reduced massing.
We have, we have set back the fourth floor in, across the entire front and the majority of the side where it turns the corner facing south on El Camino.
How far is that setback? It's not particularly visible in the elevations.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know offhand. I think the upper level, I think there is about a four-foot setback on the right-hand side and I believe there's more than that on the left-hand side at that corner adjacent to the alley.
The, I guess now I see the setbacks on the, on the area facing El Camino, but on the right side, which is actually a fairly prominent side as you're coming towards, coming, wait, actually either the right or the left, I was thinking as you're, yes, you're going south from San Carlos Avenue, that's a pretty prominent spot in that area. Doesn't look like, that is a little more monolithic looking in, in this picture.
You mean a picture of the retail side?
The upper right, in the upper right picture, in the upper right quadrant of that picture, that, that part of the building is quite, and that's going to be pretty highly visible when you're turning onto San Carlos Avenue.
Are there no more commission questions? Is there anyone in the public, in the audience that wishes to support or oppose the project? Yes, sir. I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you, okay, you can come back, you can come back, yeah. Very nice presentation.
Good evening.
Will you give us your name, please, sir?
Bruno.
Hi, Mike.
Hi. I'm the owner of 567 and 569 Laurel Street, which is directly behind the proposed project. I've owned my property for about nearly 20 years, so I've watched slowly, but sadly, the, the parking problems have increased substantially over the years. And that's the main thrust of what I want to talk about here. All the parking on our block is private. There's no public parking. In recent months, we've had to start towing cars off of our property because people have been coming, especially at lunchtime, and just feel free to, and our spaces are marked. Call a banker, starting to tow cars now. The merchants around us, which are, as you know, there's a lot of restaurants, I'm sure that I could be pleased that their customers are going to get started, are being towed I think the project is, it's, I must say, it's, it's an attractive building. However, I think it's way too large for, for the site. Seems to me that if you eliminated the fourth floor, you'd have enough parking on-site to accommodate everybody, including extra guest parking. Where are guests for 24 units going to park? We talked about earlier, two sites on, two, two spaces on-site. That's hardly enough. There's a building down the block that's being built right now with, I think, nine or 10 units. They have issues there with, you know, they're going to have issues there with guest parking. Surrounding us, the streets around us are multi-unit buildings already that have been there for years, apartments. If you go up and down the streets there, you'll see no open spaces typically. They're full. My concern for my property and, and my neighbors are where owners of this, in this property, that are going to have more than one car or their guests are where they're going to park. Where are the employees of the, the two proposed commercial spaces going to park? Where are the owners going to park? Where are their customers going to park? There is only five spaces on El Camino and the entire block that's public spaces. Let's see. So I think it's, it's just going to be an ongoing problem with, with the parking. People that are going to be going to, let's say, if it's a restaurant, you know, they wouldn't want to park as close as they can. I'm highly protective of my, my parking on my building, even at night, because I do go in and out oftentimes at night. And I will have no qualms to start towing people at any time of the evening. It doesn't matter. It's, it's my property, I pay the taxes, you know, I pay the mortgage, nobody else does. And, you know, I'd be damned if I'm going to be a public parking lot, you know? So I just want to bring that to your attention and, and consider, you know, as you consider this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would you like to respond, a transportation consultant, to any of his remarks? It's optional.
So I'll just say that, you know, we did the, the parking reduction analysis. The retail by code is not required to provide parking, so we did not conduct a parking analysis for that section. Our analysis is focused only on the residential portion.
Is that right? No additional parking's required for a restaurant? I mean, is.
That is correct. In the mixed-use districts, if the square footage is less than 1,500, there's no parking requirement.
If I could just, perhaps the architect, so the parking, you know, you obviously are working hard to, you know, make it work here with the lift and with the tandem parking. I think you're certainly, you know, raising concern with that. What, what kind of drove that? Was it just, you know, the fourth floor now requires so many more spaces? Is it you were trying to preserve the first floor area to have the mixed use? Or was, you know, was it ever considered that you would go below grade, but that became cost prohibitive as this was designed? If you could speak to how you ended up with such a, you know, challenged parking plan here?
Yeah, unfortunately, like I was explaining before, the fact that there's an AT&amp;T easement, you know, that basically bifurcates the property, that precluded us from, there's no possible way that we could do underground parking.
Okay.
And so that really tied our hands in terms of creating parking solutions. So as we looked at it, we felt it was important and the right response to create some sort of, you know, street frontage along El Camino that would promote, you know, pedestrian activity, keep those small so that we could reduce the impact, you know, of those along with, along the street and to the community. So then we, you know, outside of that, we tried to maximize, okay, what can we use for parking, knowing that we can't go below ground? And then we had to get creative, you know, to come up with the solution to try to get as many spaces as we could, which we are providing, you know, all but four that are technically required for, you know, according to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, okay, well, I.
We felt like we, we did the best that we could and the focus also had to do with, I, I know we've talked a lot about unbundled parking and the fact that the likelihood for resident parking is going to be less than the requirement of the zoning ordinance, but even if we assume that all of those spaces would get filled, you know, by the residents, we have provided all of those, you know, within the, the proposal. And that was the important thing because you don't know, even though you're, you know, proposing unbundled parking. And we think that this is, you know, a great location where that does make sense and it's a pretty high likelihood that all of those spaces would not be used, you know, by residents.
And through the chair, staff just wanted to add, as part of the provision to consider unbundled parking, and again, would require approval of a use permit by the planning commission, but under the provisions to have unbundled parking, the code does state that the priority must first be given to the, to the actual units, the residents of the building themselves. And it's even broken down that same priority is given to the larger unit. So when there's three bedrooms, those tenants would get, or owners get first priority and then it goes to the two-bedroom units and then to the other units. And that's mostly probably in recognition that the larger units, those tenants are probably going to have maybe more than one car. So it does, the, the zoning ordinance does give some guidance on how the parking is to be initially managed. And that isn't, is discussed on page 155 of the packet and is also included as a condition of approval, condition number 29 on page 167. Also, one of the things that staff could offer the commission to consider is that those provisions also be included in the CCNRs so that as the CCNRs are drafted, there's some guidance to the HOA and how those parking spaces would initially be leased out.
And so Lisa, what happens if the commission does not approve the unbundled parking provision? Then what happens with the, with the parking spaces as, as designed or as conceived?
The parking plan would still be compliant with the code if the unbundled parking was not approved. The issue would be we may need to go back and look at the TDM plan because the TDM plan did include, the Transportation Demand Management Plan did include the unbundled parking as a measure to effectively reduce the trips to the project site. And we're really seeing around transit, so in San Carlos, Redwood City and other communities, people are choosing to buy these units and live here when they don't have a car. I know a few people that live at the Tressel apartment where it's a couple, they both work, only one of them has a car. One can hop on the train, the other walks to work. So it's a very effective location to have this unbundled parking situation and we are supportive of it. We're also seeing a lot of developments using the lift system and I think people are just going to be, become more comfortable with it as, you know, you see it in more projects. So we're seeing it be much more prevalent in Redwood City, San Carlos and a few other communities. We're seeing a lot of developments.
Do you have any examples or has it been thought through how guest parking is, is handled? Because it does seem likely all the spaces get sold and now, you know, there is no guest parking.
Yeah, so as we indicated with this project specifically, there, there could be a reservation of guest parking that could be included as a condition of approval and that could be two or three spaces up to the discretion of the commission. We would recommend two, I believe, based on the number of spaces that are provided.
I just had a, a brief question for you on, on, on the elevator. Just looking at this, is that elevator, is that just, is that an adequately sized elevator? Is that, it looks smallish to me for the number of units here. And if you could just explain to me, like, when is it you start to think about more than one elevator? And, you know, is that big enough for everyone to move everything into a fourth-floor apartment? I mean, it looks like a bare minimum-sized elevator to me.
No, it's actually, you know, the, the fire code requires a gurney-compliant elevator. So they have specific dimensions, you know, for emergency personnel to get in there, you know, bring someone on a gurney in the elevator, you know, up and down.
Yeah.
I don't, I guess if you looked really closely at our floor plan, you can see there's kind of a rectangular shape and that indicates, you know, that gurney compliance. So it's a, it's a good-sized elevator. So typically for your question about moving people and furniture, more than adequate for that.
Okay. And how many units do you see in a building before you start thinking about two elevators?
Oh, that's, that's a. Oh, that's, that's a good question. I, I don't know the, if there's a magic number for that.
Okay. Okay. Just, I mean, at some level, it becomes a redundancy thing, too. We've all seen elevators go out for a couple days, and, you know, that's tough when there's only one, of course.
To say nothing of when, you know, you've got a family moving in over the course of a day, all of that stuff is in the elevator, and everybody else gets to use the stairs.
No other comments? Commission? I'll move that the public hearing be closed.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Maybe a question for staff. Looking at the sidewalk on El Camino and this notion of Grand Boulevard, does the, the space allowed for pedestrian walkway, is it consistent with, you know, a wide place to walk? Or does the restaurant and the retail encroach to the point where we're going to end up a brand-new big building with kind of a skinny little sidewalk on a Grand Boulevard, which kind of just doesn't tie together?
Well, that is something that staff looks at, and there is a specific code requirement for that. But I don't, I think Lisa will have the details on those dimensions.
This sidewalk is 10 feet wide, so that does meet our requirements. And the patio restaurant space would not encroach out, because there's a low wall that would maintain that. So they would not be allowed to have chairs and tables encroach out to the sidewalk.
Thank you.
I have a, like I said, I like the architecture, right? And I think there's been a lot of effort to make it aesthetically pleasing, but I think there are a lot of things that make this not the right fit for where it is. I think it's in general, I think it's too big, it's too tall. The parking is a real consideration. I mean, it's crammed in there inside the building with the lifts. And then there is no on-street parking, per se. And like, I'm sorry, I forget your name.
Mike.
Mike, as he has said, that, you know, where are the employees going to park? Where are the, where are the, you know, the patrons going to park? Because there's not going to be the room. I know that we all think that there's going to be all this extra parking, and maybe 20 years from now, life will have changed enough to where there'll be more people walking, but that's about 20 years from now. I don't think that's going to be any time within the next five to 10 years. I think we're going to have a big parking problem if we put something in there that big. And what I would suggest with all this is that we give the applicant the direction to go back, and instead of saying no to this, that we give the applicant direction to go back and work with staff to come up with something that's a better fit for that area, whether it's taking the fourth story off, if it's making the setbacks more than they are to make it, you know, not as competitive to the rest of the area. I think there's a number of ways that this thing should be improved upon before we put it in our showcase downtown. And that's just, that's my humble opinion, so.
Yeah. I'm also concerned that the scale is disproportionate to the, to the other large new buildings that are along there, the Transit Village. So I'm, I agree with you on that. The parking, you know, we could, to some extent, solve that by having, not solve it, but mitigate it somewhat by specifying a reasonable number of guest spots, which I don't know about the parking for the restaurant or commercial facilities.
It's...
Not required for other restaurants, and so it's, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable requiring it for these particular ones if it's not a general requirement.
You know, John, at the beginning, you talked about in impression that this project maximized sort of every square inch of a piece of land. And so, you know, congratulations to the team for having thought about how to get the most value out of their property. And I think what it does is it creates a level of intensity, back to Sharon's point, it creates a level of intensity that has, that seems disproportionate to what personally I'd like to see in that space. So if there were more three-bedroom units that would have fewer cars with them but would generate similar amount of income, could that be a solution? Or, you know, I'm not trying to specifically problem-solve, are there other ways to step in the fourth floor, create a few smaller units, create less demand, less intensity? If I could design it, that would be an outcome that I'd, you know, I'd ask for.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. I don't like the parking plan. I mean, maybe I could get comfortable with a lift puzzle. I don't have personal experience with that, but I guess it's done. But to even be using tandem parking and, you know, like the previous building we looked at showed how a 2015 Suburban would be driving around into those parking spots, I would just say, good luck trying that in this garage. But it's tough, because I'm also very supportive of the mixed-use nature, the retail and the restaurant. You know, that's what we need on El Camino. You know, we need that housing over commercial, you know, that's what's going to get people a lot of cars and using their neighborhoods. So, you know, it's tough. As far as the four stories, I mean, I agree. I have a reaction against kind of the maximized nature of this project. But if, if not there, then where? I mean, we have a zoning code that allows it, and if we wouldn't allow it across the street from our train station, does that mean we need to agendize changing our code? Because if we can't approve it there, how and where would we approve it is just a question I think is worth asking.
I think, and actually, this is prior to you coming to the commission, on Laurel, on actually the west side of Laurel, we brought up the fact that we thought that the zoning said it gave too much height. And we requested that that be brought back before the planning commission as part of some other work that was being done with the consultants to actually lower that for that very reason. So that's, I don't know if that was something you would consider or not, but I just, I don't know if you were aware of that, because that happened like almost two years ago.
And that was in context of the Transit Village approval?
No, this is in context of just being on the west side of Laurel and comparison to behind the west side of Laurel are single-family homes.
I see. Transition period.
Right, transition.
And the code does ask that it be proportionate, that it be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So I think there's some room for us to, to pressure, to put some pressure on this, in my opinion.
And through the chair.
I just want to make sure that we answer all your questions, like I've said before. And it sounds like the commission's grappling with some of these issues. Lisa has some of the code requirements on the density and the height issues, I think. And then the, what I just want to focus you on is you've got a design review, which has certain findings for design review, compatibility is one of them, bulk and mass. But I've said this before at meetings, that if it meets our code, we better have some really strong reasons in the record as to why the height is not the, it's, that cannot be the sole issue of why you can't approve it. It's got to be something related to the design, the location, the setting, and the impact on other properties and the view of other properties is part of that. The others, the other items you're considering are the tentative map for the project, the low-market-rate housing plan, which includes the density bonus, which overlays with this, the height of this building and the density that you're allowing. Under the code, when someone applies for a density bonus, we have to give accommodations under state law, and they get the density bonus. And then the third thing is the use, or the other thing is the TDM plan, and then there's a use permit for this parking issue. What's the term on that? Unbundled parking. And I heard you struggling with the way the unbundled parking is going to work, and I think there's a lot of questions, a lot of good questions from that. But I just want to focus you back on, those are kind of the five things you're looking at tonight. And then Lisa had some specifics on part of that.
Yeah. So the code requirement on, in granting design review approval, the commission may impose conditions that are reasonable related to application and deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of this chapter and ensure compliance with applicable criteria. They may not impose requirements pertaining to use or that are more restrictive than the standards set forth in this title, or a valid use permit or variance, if such conditions would require a reduction in the residential density or the floor-area ratio of the proposed project. So this project, as Greg had indicated, the city attorney, you know, they've got that density bonus provision that they're, they've achieved that, and it's a by right according to state law, and they've met or exceeded all of their setback and height requirements.
And if I could just add, through the chair, the difference between this project and the Transit Village, where the Transit Village was reduced by an entire floor, was that was a planned development permit. And so the difference there is that they were asking for a change of zoning along with the project. And thus, the council had the authority, the city council at that time had the authority to reduce the height of the building, because it was a zoning change. The difference is, in this case, you have your zoning limitations of height, setbacks and such. And so for design review, it pretty much says you cannot touch the height unless, maybe it's a setback further for visual or aesthetic purposes and things like that. But you have to be careful about reducing, when you do that, you have to look at the density. Does that also eliminate an entire unit? Or in setting back a portion of the building, it might eliminate a bedroom, but it, it is more aesthetically acceptable to the planning commission. So it's kind of a struggle here. We've listened to the commission talking about compatibility, but because of what's on the table this evening, you know, your ability to reduce it by a floor or reduce the number of units is restricted.
The, and I appreciate that input. I mean, our design review standards are pretty clear, though. I mean, the one that we do come back to frequently is, the project has been designed to be compatible with neighboring development by avoiding big differences in building scale and character between developments on adjoining lots. And, you know, I'm, there is nothing over two stories on that entire block. So I think we are certainly considering a significant difference in building scale and character by looking at a four-story here. Am I not understanding that aspect of design review correctly?
Well, I think if there is another building that's at least three stories that's being constructed right now on the same block, and, and then across the street is, you know, another big difference with the Transit Village is it was a massive project that was not, not, much larger scale than this. I mean, obviously. So I'm, I'm, I think that there's, there is the design review standard, as you quoted, Commissioner, are, are there, but there's also the state density bonus law that really constrains the reduction in the density of the project. So I'm, I mean, I think if there's, if we haven't answered all your questions, I think we can get your questions and come back at a future meeting to answer all the questions, because I don't have all the answers to your questions tonight personally. But I do know that we are very constrained on the density bonus rules, and design review is not really, I mean, I've said this at meetings before, it's not an override of our general zoning standards. It's a review of the look and feel of the building. So even if there's a four-story building and it's allowed in our zoning, you really have to load up the record with the compatibility. If you're going to use that as a reason, I want to be able to give you the reasons to do that. This one's, I haven't heard that yet, but I'm, I'm willing to get that information. You know, it's, if you're saying, hey, a four-story building just is incompatible here, I don't, that's not enough under, under the law. I think we have to, we have to say, a four-story building isn't compatible here because, not because it's a four-story building, it has to be because it's not compatible with the other projects in the area. And, boy, this is the, this is the most densely zoned part of San Carlos, and a 50-story building is the height limit here, and they're, they're getting two, two feet more than that because of the parapet, and that's allowed. They're meeting that standard. So it's, you know, we're talking about land, land use and property rights. So I want to be able to answer all your questions. If you're not really prepared tonight to make a decision on this, because redesigning this project on the fly is difficult. So we need to, we need to have it come back to you with more information if you need it. If you, if we can answer your questions tonight, we will try, but...
I think for me that Mr. Rubens has clear, cast some light on the issue, although I would agree that it is a massive building. It's a handsome building, and it's in a good location for the center of town and all. But I would hate to err on the side of overreacting and doing something beyond our authority when the law is pretty clear and the code, to me, is clear and has a little more weight than design review, as, as we all know.
And I just want to be very clear that if there's elements of this building and the design that's before you that you think are too bulky and too massive and could use some reconfiguration or articulation or the other things that we traditionally do in design review, that's definitely within your purview. I think what we're saying is that you're really constrained on the overall height and density on the project. You do have discretion on the, on granting the unbundled parking. That's a, that's a discretionary use permit. You do not have to grant that. And then that, if you don't feel comfortable with the configuration of the parking, you can ask them to redo the parking to make it more efficient or allow for guests or those that, that's, you don't have to grant that use permit. So that's a separate issue. I think it's, it's something that's contemplated in our code. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not something they have to grant, it's a use permit. So, you know, and I think some of the issues you've raised are valid ones on that about tandem parking and the lack of guest parking, which is generally provided in the code under the general standards. But I think there's some advantages that, to the unbundled parking that maybe haven't been spelled out as much as they could have.
I think the unbundled parking adds flexibility and makes it workable, and they've certainly maximized the number of vehicles that can be accommodated in the, on the ground-level floor. I don't see how, unless they took the fourth floor off and that reduced the number of parking spaces required, that would solve some of the problems.
Besides the unbundling, is there anything else we're granting here by way of parking? I mean, are, so they're a couple short of the requirement, but has that been justified by the, by the plan? Or are we actually being asked to excuse them and give them back a couple parking spaces? And like, for example, are tandem spaces always considered equivalent to regular spaces in this analysis? Or is that something else we're also being asked to, to... Or is that something else we're also being asked to grant a waiver on?
No, it's not discretionary, it's required with the, in conjunction with the TDM plan. The code actually says shall be reduced by 20%. So that's, that's not an additional discretionary item tonight for the parking.
Okay, and it's not been reduced by more than 20%?
I believe it's 18%.
Okay, and tandem spaces were, we always treat those just like regular spaces?
They're permitted under the code.
Okay.
Could we have the gentleman from Hexcon come up and explain the science by which we think we're going to get the reduction by using the unbundled parking?
Yeah, so, so we looked over the CAPCO, which is the California air pollution, I forget the last words of, of this association. So, so usually by, by doing unbundled parking, you can get between, I have the numbers right here, hold on a second. I want to get this right for you guys. So you can get between 3% to 13% reduction in your trips generation. So we took the lower end, which is 3%, and that's the line item that, you know, we provided on page, on table, table two of the TDM plan.
What page?
Page 14.
Which page are you looking at? This one? Page 209 of your packet. You don't have that.
Yeah. So the science behind doing unbundled parking and proposing unbundled parking as a TDM plan is because you're really, you know, doing this in conjunction with the location, being right next to the Caltrain station and being right next to the downtown location, you're sort of encouraging people who don't have a car or who don't ever want to have a car to consider this location, to buy a condo in this location, because there are financial incentives, because there, the units are, do not include the parking costs.
So this says that unbundled parking basically would give us a 3% reduction, which is really not really, I mean, how many trips does that equal?
So if you, if you add everything together, we have 21%, and that's, you know, we're reducing, the project's only generating nine trips in the morning and 11 trips in the evening. So the reduction that we need right now is only two vehicles.
And I'm just now noticing, it looks like our below-market renters have to pay full-market price for the parking spaces. We're not renters, but buyers. Like, there is no below-market provision for these parking spaces, so we're likely, in some sense, that's, you know, treats them differently, which I think is not allowed otherwise.
If they would choose to purchase, it may affect the price that they would be able to charge for the unit under the BMR, because we take a look at establishing the purchase price for that below-market rate unit based on what they pay in utilities, HOA, and then we could also account for one parking space. And so the price of the housing unit would be reduced to accommodate that.
So it could be, but like, so is it, is there a desk inside the city that administers, you know, how all this happens with below-market housing? And like, who's going to think, oh, a parking's not included?
We have staff that takes care of that.
And where is that, like, can you just, like, who is that in the city? I'm not, I'm just not familiar.
Martin Romo's our Housing and Economic Development Manager, and as well as Adam Aronson is our Housing and Economic Development Coordinator, and the three of us sit together.
Okay, okay.
Under Al's supervision.
Well, I guess, I'd like to reiterate that from a compatibility and design review perspective, to me, the sides of the building, not the front face, but the sides that are closest to El Camino, seem to go more or less straight up and appear fairly monolithic. And so I think that's going to emphasize the mass, massive-ness of the building and that a design modification there might soften that. So I think that could be a way to change the aesthetics of it to be more compatible without, without overextending our authority to talk about the number of stories and the and such. In this case, having a four-story, straight-up wall there is, is, is fairly extreme in my, in my view on the side. It's sort of, on the front, the setback and the architectural elements soften it up quite a bit. But when you're driving on the street, you see the side of the building as much as the front, as you're approaching it from either the south or the north. So that would be something that I would wonder whether the proposal could, could address that.
Maybe, maybe for Steve. Steve, could you just clarify, is this image here, can, I don't know if you can see it, but is, yeah, I'm on, I'm looking, sorry, I can't tell. Is this the north face that you would see coming south?
That actually looks, looks fair. Yeah, see, it's basically straight up for four stories. There's a, maybe there's an inch or two differential there, but it's basically, it's a straight up for four stories.
So what you're looking at here, this is the rear of the building? So you likely would never be able to see that from El Camino, which is why we designed it that way. On the front side, there is a step back, you know, here at the fourth floor, where we're creating this roof element and this roof element to break this up. So, so this wall right here is basically at the property line, and then this steps back five feet from there.
This is El Camino?
Correct.
Here?
Yep.
El Camino.
Go to that corner.
No, so.
This one?
Yeah, that's good, thank you. But this surface here, so is there a, I want to see what's.
So, so again, so, so this, this wall plant, or I'm sorry, this steps back five feet from this, okay? And then this steps back from here, and there's a roof element that breaks up that upper fourth floor.
Yeah, it's hard for me to, coming back to the picture, which.
Swings around from the other side, that's the corner.
Yeah, that's, that's the looking kind of west. If you go to the other end of the building coming south on, or east on Camino, yep, one more, yeah, I think, that's the rear. Yeah, you don't.
It's the step back from the front.
Yeah, it's this here, David.
This one shows from right hand side.
Yeah. Can you pull up this?
In the front of the building on the corners, that's stepping down one story. And next to it is, are, stepping down to three stories, right?
Pointer or not?
Stepping down to the third story.
Oh, here. It's just so hard to see.
Front corner.
So this perspective shows, I think, the side that you're questioning, Mr. Roof?
Yes.
So you can use your mouse here. Okay. Start with the first floor, maybe, and then step back. Yeah, so what I was trying to explain is, you know, this is our first-floor commercial, correct? This wall goes, you know, near that property line. There's a five-foot setback here, you know, to this level. So we're creating some separation and setback if you were to experience the building driving, you know, in your car. And we've recreated kind of a similar element, you know, as this on this vertical plane. And then we've created, again, a third-floor roof element as we've done on, across here, where this roof line continues back. We've bumped out, you know, this section and created another gable, which is the same form as this, which separates, you know, the upper floor, you know, from the rest of this. So, and then we have upper windows here as well facing that side. So there's, there's kind of a lot of architectural element, I think, in that side, which you probably won't see a lot of realistically, you know, from a car or from the street. But we were, you know, we worked with staff on that particular element, where there are some of these that were, you know, we've created real windows where there might not even be one, because we were trying to, we worked very hard at making that look as good as we could.
Surface of the wall on the fourth floor, is that flat with the surface of the wall on the second and third floors? Or is there a setback on that?
I believe it is in the same plane as this front right here. But you, but you have this roof eave that, you know, again, creates a horizontal.
Going out there, right. I mean, you know, we can just, we can say our hands are tied and we need to say yes to what the city is, says fits the zoning rules, or we can say, the compatibility in design seems, it seems, you know, that there's some room for improvement there. It's a, seemed, it's a big, it's a big building, and we hear pretty clearly from, from our, our community that there's some concern about that. I'm afraid it's going to poke out as a disproportionate thing, and we may not be able to say, well, no, we don't want to see four-story buildings, okay, we can't say that, but we can ask that the design tried to soften that, that appearance.
I think we're really going to regret it if we prove this as-is. I just, I understand what Mr. Rubens is saying, but I, just the parking issue alone, what it, just, just the fact that there's, you know, we're not, I understand our code, it says that we don't, for, for retail, we don't have to provide parking, but we all know that down there, there is no parking. That alone is going to make this problematic. And what I would like to see is that even though it's probably not required by our zoning or by law, that the applicant do this, I would like to really see them go back and see what they could do about making this more fit the characters, the character of our renterhood better than it does right now, and address some of these issues. And I can't, you know, that's just, that's just me, and that's just a request, I can't, I mean, I can say no, and that's the only recourse I have, but I think, I think you can do better. I think you can do better for this prime real estate that's in our community. I think you can do better. I think you're maximizing it, and I don't think it's in the best interest of San Carlos.
I will just say that I'm not in a position where I can approve this project just based on the unbundled parking and kind of the lack of detail around that. I support the unbundled parking concept. I think that is valid, especially for a location so close to transit. And so I support that creative thinking, but I don't, I just don't understand how that will be administered. I see the, you know, the conditions that we would, that would be imposed, but I don't see how a program is established that, my major concerns are that, you know, this is below-market rate housing, so exactly how do the, we guarantee on an ongoing basis that the below-market rate nature of those units also allow for below-market rate parking. So, you know, they just aren't out of luck on parking. That's not in character with why we do below-market rate, a below-market rate program. And then my other major concern is that there's never, there's never a commercial aspect to this parking lot. I wouldn't want people selling their units in five, 10 years and keeping their parking space to lease it out to people who want to park at Caltrans. So I need to understand exactly how these parking spaces, they have to be sold with your unit, but like, what mechanism is that? Is that something that goes on the deed for the parking, or what? I just, I don't understand that, but I need to understand how these parking spaces will be administered on an ongoing basis. And then also, you know, what guarantees these tandem spaces are bundled so that they're only sold together? I need to understand that as well. And I also, I do think, especially with a restaurant on site, some measure of guest parking is, is necessary here. And I don't think two's enough. I mean, it looks like six is what's required by our zoning, so I guess, you know, I would like to see six. Or a good justification why there doesn't need to be six. But in general, I just need to, you know, if as a city we're going to start approving unbundled parking, then we need to think through these issues, or we are going to have commercial people selling parking spaces like they do in Manhattan in downtown San Carlos, and we are going to have below-market rate individuals not being able to afford parking at their units, and those are significant concerns. So until I fully understand that, I won't be able to approve this.
I think the, the parking sales program could be stipulated in the CCNRs like many things are in condominium projects. I don't see that as the major obstacle. Maybe the number of parking spaces or the configuration is more a consideration. I'm also not so alarmed about the height, because, and part of that is because our code says you're well within it. It is a massive building, but when you look across the street, there's massive buildings for a half a mile with the Transit Village, so if anything, this is something that fits in more than a one-story office building or restaurant. So I think we're, we're getting to a point where we need to decide what we want the staff to do and what direction we can give our applicants in, in the future.
I'd be specific to say, with clarity around the linkage of the parking to the unit and the linkage between the deed for the asset called condo and the mechanics of how the condo and the parking space go together to address the points that Commissioner Dugan raised, I could support the, sorry, that plus for me. I'm also in the, you know, I'd like to see six spaces reserved for guests. I think four is a minimum. And visually, I'm, I actually need to compliment the, the design group and the team. I think it's a very attractive building, you know, the one, actually, it's the one prominent bedroom or room up in this most forward corner, that if it, if it had setback, I think it would visually just change the nature of that particular corner. You've already tackled it on the other side. I mean, the visual from the other is, is quite good, you've got a varied front, so photovoltaic on the roof, some minimum, a minimum number of agreed, reserved, permanent guest parking spaces, clarity on the linkage on the ownership of the condo unit to the parking and how they change with time. change with time. And that one, if there are other ideas on what you could do for that one space up there, I, I could support the project.
I would agree with the comments that you say.
Yeah, and I, I would just chime in to say, in general, you know, our zoning allows for the four stories and, and they're under the height. So, you know, i- if we do think our community does not support that, then we need to work with staff and agendaize changing the zoning and the height, but we haven't done that. So that is what we have. That said, I think it's fair to say, yeah, we think there should be more of a setback on that fourth floor, specifically on the most prominent corner. I think that's fair for us to say in our purview of design review, so that is additional input that I share as well.
You know, we have reduced things from four stories to three stories further inside that were on Laurel Street. We asked and we worked with the applicant, and they worked with us to reduce things from four stories to three stories. We've done that before. Like I said, I don't know if the applicant was required to or not, but we certainly have done that before. So I guess that's one thing, and then I, I really like the point you brought up about the administering of the unbundled parking and thinking that through and coming up with a little bit more of a solution on that, that we would have to have some more information on so we can make a decision. And I agree with what you said as well.
If this were on Laurel Street, I would vote against it, no, no question, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit in, but here, I think it fits in with the Transit Village across the street.
The parking is just.
It's a parking issue.
I really, yeah, I've already said my piece, so.
So I think we are in a position to continue this item?
Through the chair, and of course, this would have to be discussed with the applicant and staff. The commission, you know, has two options. One, you can continue it to a date uncertain and to give the applicant some time to respond to your, to your comments May this evening, or you could continue it to a date certain. Our next available meeting is January the 7th, however, I just have no idea how much time this is gonna take, so you would have to.
That's not gonna work.
It probably won't work, it sounds like, probably not. So continue to a date uncertain is probably the best decision.
Yeah, I wanna give them enough time as they need. I don't wanna push them to go too fast. I'm gonna give them time to consider it.
All right, see, another option is making a motion, see if it gets seconded and see what the vote is. Move ahead and we could attach some other conditions to the approval.
Just a procedural question, would a disapproval put them in a worse position with regard to bringing it back before the commission?
Well, I think if, if you disapproved the project, the applicant would be faced with the choice of appealing it to the city council. I think most of the discretionary approvals would be appealable to the city council. That would move the project more quickly, I suppose, but, you know, it's up to the, I mean, the applicant could, could chime in on whether they'd rather go that direction. Most applicants don't. They'd rather have, get the approval of the planning commission and then have it move up, so.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll go ahead and move that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
I, I second that.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Acapoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And just for the, we'll, we will try to work with the applicant on kind of getting your questions answered, and when it comes back, hopefully, we'll have all those anticipate all your questions, and, and then you can make a final decision.
Okay, that's the last of the cases. Thank you for your attention, and we'll look forward to seeing you later. Thank you. Next and last item on the agenda is reports, correspondence, and general information. Is there a report on recent city council actions?
And then for this evening, the council is on break and won't return until January.
Planning Commission comments or reports. I want to direct your attention to the, the second, oh, it's a confidential memorandum. Well, we're all friends here.
We've just provided you with some information.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry. Yeah, but this is, will be for our next meeting on January 7th, so we should read this.
Yes, I was gonna refer to those items on, under Agenda Item 7D, so I can, if there's no planning commission or reports from the commission, we can certainly jump to Item C and D.
First, we got correspondence here, and I've been trying for two years now to get a planning commission training academy going in throughout the Bay Area, and these folks have contacted me, and now they're sending a letter out that on the 31st of January next year, there'll be a meeting called Becoming a Leader in Your Local Planning Commission, and they have some snacks at 6 o'clock, says dinner, I don't think it's a full dinner. And then a short meeting, 6:30 to 8:30 at the San Mateo Library, and it's for planning commissioners. You don't have to be new on it, but they're gonna cover, I had talked with our city attorney, Mr. Rubens, about this, gosh, about a year and a half ago, not long after I got on the commission, and I, I'd like to encourage the staff to participate, Al, Lisa, Andrea, everybody. I'll be doing 100 years of planning history in 10 minutes, it says. I'm not that old, but I can't talk that fast. Anyway, what we, planning commissioners do, and you've got it, you can look it over, but I'm really encouraged that we're gonna be able to do this. Then there's another part of it, after the planning commission, this is on housing, San Mateo County Understanding Changing Landscape, April 30th, my oldest child's birthday, and again, the same format, dinner at 6, and then a two-hour meeting after that at the same location for people interested not just in planning but housing. So hopefully, some of you can participate in this. That's all I have. Any, any other commissioners have, pardon?
These look like really nice opportunities, but I'm curious, are they organized by organization or is it more of an academic?
Well, I, I would say it's a little of both, in that it's hosted by 21 Elements. Al, do you know who they are?
Yes, so 21 Elements is an organization that assists the 21 different cities in San Mateo County on completing the housing element. So we meet on a regular basis. They're there to provide us with information. They're very objective. They're just there to tell us when the state passes new housing laws, what's required, what it consists of. So it's very neutral, and the spirit of this is really to just inform the commission and give them some tools to work with, as you all do your work here on the dais every other Monday night for the month. So yes, our staff would also encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. It's great. I think this is the first time they're putting it together, and on the front page memo, it requires that you respond not to staff here at the City of San Carlos, but to the person associated with 21 Elements, and that person is Joshua Abrams, and his email and phone number are there if you have any questions or want to RSVP, and we certainly hope you do. So that is why we handed this out to you this evening.
Yeah, I haven't met Josh, but I talked to him on the phone, and we've had several conference calls with people from 21 Elements and Home for All, and then I'm on the planning board at the APA Northern California section, so I'm glad that they included us in it, too.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then there is just one other item. As Don pointed out, it's on your, on the dais for you. It's just a memo from the city attorney's office that we asked that you look at before coming to the public hearing on January 7th. And of course, January 7th, what we do have on the agenda is recommended approval of a new ordinance to address wireless facilities. So the memo will explain a couple of things about that. And staff does not have any other announcements other than to wish you all a very happy holiday break and a happy new year, and we will see you back here on Monday, January the 7th. Thank you.
I'm going to the desert this week, for two weeks, but I'll be back on the 7th. And happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Have a great break and a happy holiday.
Thank you.
With that, we're adjourned again.